Morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at eight thirty a.m. at our City Hall chambers. And we'd like to welcome everyone. Obviously, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and thank you for being here. It seems like it's been a little bit of a while, but we're here today, and we're going to have a great meeting, kind of wrapping up our year. So at this time, I'd like to call Pastor Don Steriano with Kingdom Life Christian Church, as well as the Bradenton Police Department Chaplain. So welcome Pastor Don.
Good morning and Merry Christmas. As I was preparing for this morning, praying about what I would pray, I just really heard a word from the Holy Spirit to encourage all of you as our mothers and fathers of the city. And because you honor God and honor each other, and there's such a spirit of unity among the leaders, I believe that you've caught the attention of heaven, and so is the city. And I just have a scripture to read right before I pray. The signs where "I love this city," God is saying that back to you. "I love this city." Jeremiah twenty-nine, eleven, and twelve says, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you a hope and a future. Then you will call upon me and come and pray to me, and I will listen, because I am your Lord." Would you bow your heads? Dear heavenly Father, thank you for our city leaders. And I pray that you would bless them with the abundant blessings of heaven upon every area of their lives and their beloved families. Protect them and guide them and strengthen them and keep them, and remind each of them that they are loved, significant, needed, and honored, and made in your divine image. May the revelation that they are your sons and daughters strengthen their hearts and their minds and their soul. I also declare this over every cherished employee and citizen over our friendly city. I pray for today's council meeting that wisdom would be their rudder, your will would be their compass, and their love for the city and its people would be the fuel that propels them to the destinations of their decisions. I pray where there's diversity in opinion, the spirit of unity and honor and kindness and compassion would be their bond for harmony. I pray they would rule with the heart of a servant and serve with the heart of a king. I declare your glorious kingdom to come and your perfect will to be done over the city of Bradenton as it is in heaven. In the name of Jesus the Christ, I pray. And everyone said amen.
Amen.
Please join us and all veterans in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Don. Don't leave yet. So I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Chief Bevins to come up at this time, just while Pastor Don's still here, kind of talk about last night's event. And I know he's leaving, but without him, fifteen years ago, this wouldn't have been possible. So if you can give us a little synopsis on what happened last night and what's been going on for fifteen years.
Absolutely. And good morning, everybody. And wasn't that just probably one of the finest messages we've heard, and so uplifting? You always do so well by us. So thankful to have you. And speaking of how thankful we are to have him, I don't know how long honoring the badge predates-- come up here, so I have to stop looking back at you. Honoring the badge predates you as our chaplain, but I do know that fifteen years ago, this initiative began. It actually began really with just philanthropy by a couple folks. It was something that happened at Toys R' Us. They're now out of business, maybe because they never sponsored anything and made us pay full price for all the gifts. Walmart, on the other hand, has been an incredible provider, Cox Chevrolet. It's been going on fifteen years now. And for those of you who don't know what it's about, we invite children from throughout the community. They're hand-selected based on apparent need, and we provide them vouchers. They come and have the opportunity, this year like no other years, to shop not only with a police officer, but with our fire department personnel. I was just talking to Chief Gere. He said that his fire folks just were blown away by it. They loved it. They want to be a greater part of it. It'll never be as many people as the police, because I always have to win, you know, when it comes to you, Chief Gere. But it was just incredible. We had city folks come out. Most of you came out. The volunteerism was incredible. Hundred and twenty kids last night, and that brings our fifteen-year total to twenty-two hundred children served. And that's just with the vouchers. That doesn't even go to the Secret Santa cards that some of us were walking around the store handing out. And I'll tell you, if you just want to see some emotions on these folks, we always go to the food side, not the toy side, because these are the families with the kids in tow that can't go shopping over there. They've just got to spend their money on food. And when we hand them these random gift cards, it's incredibly uplifting for the officers who are out there, Valerie Knight, who organized all this. You know, this is what it's all about for us. This is why we do our job. And Pastor Don, you started this. You're a great, you know, just a great participant in that and everything else we do. Kingdom Life Church, I know your church has grown, but you still find the time to be our chaplain, our only chaplain, and we don't need anybody else. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
All right, yeah, just a couple things that I want to say. Obviously, you know, thank you for kind of spearheading that years ago, kind of get it going, and really what's turned into an unbelievable event. And what I was proud as the leader of this city and the government side is not only the police officers that showed up, but we had firefighters, city staff. And I think that's a contribution to what says how, you know, our leadership and management is running the city, how this council is showing the support for what we do in this city, and just an overall good atmosphere that's here now. And I'm proud to say that we've got great leaders doing that and bringing it. And it just, there's two things taken out of really last night, obviously that, and the other is when a police chief walks up to somebody in Walmart on the grocery side, they get a little nervous, you know, what's going on. But once we explain it to them, and you know, you see they've got the groceries, and they've got the bare minimum what they probably need to eat. But when they get that gift card, you know, and we tell to go, you know, get something for their kid, you can see the child smile, and you see the parents feel a little sense of pride. So that's what it's about, and that's what we want to continue to do. And so I think, you know, keep growing this, and you know, none of us want to wish our life away, but every year, it's so much fun. And then the other thing, I'm just going to tell this story because it really hit home, where we saw somebody, we were going up to them, we didn't see the officer with them, and we got up to them, didn't really speak a lot of English. And then the officer came up and said, and we saw in their cart, you know, we saw, you know, because they're supposed to be getting toys for the kids for Christmas. We saw three backpacks, I believe it was, three pair of shoes, and some clothing items. Well, Freddie came up and said, hey, you know, that's what they wanted. And it's like, well, you know, no, it's supposed to be for toys. Well, no, that's what the kids wanted, because they wanted a sense of pride at their school, and they go to one of our Title One schools here in town, and those kids wanted to have that. So when they go to school, they're like the other kids. And, you know, that really sent it home. So we gave them some other cards to say, go get some toys for the kids. But that brings it home what it's all about. You know, you give a child a sense of value that may not have it at their school, and it makes them, you know, better people and want to be part of it. So, you know, that touched the heartstrings, really. Those kids wanted that stuff because they didn't have it like their friends. So, you know, I'm just proud of this event and proud of what has got started in the city long before me, and we will always work to continue that. So is there any council that wants to say anything? Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, I was going to say in my council report, but I just love the never say no. The couple, the family I was paired with had a little boy about eight years old, and she thought it was just going to be for him. And I don't know if it was intended to, but they said, no, go ahead, add on little baby sister who was in the arms. So I just like that you have the flexibility and just want to just give joy to everybody at this time of year. So thank you. It's a wonderful event.
Ms. Barnaby?
Well, and I want to shout out to a couple of unsung heroes. One is Maria Kramer, who shows up and gets everybody set up for the photos with Santa and the elf and the Grinch.
Ms. Barnaby.
And don't forget the elf.
It was really interesting. Some of the younger kids were kind of afraid of the Grinch. And we had, you know, the opportunity to say, no, no, he's going to be good this year. So it was so nice and so special. I cannot believe your officer that stayed in that Grinch costume the entire time.
That was really the Grinch.
Oh, sorry. It was, for, in certain apparel, it was a little warm. I'll just say that. How's that? But Pastor Don, thank you.
I honor it. All glory to the Lord.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby. Thank you for dressing up, and obviously others, Kenny Langston and Paige, who drives the truck that gets in there, so it's everything that's good. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. Two things. One, the original partnership was Pastor Don with Chief Razulowski all those years ago. So that was really, you had a great partner back then. You have certainly a great partner now. It's sort of been supercharged, I think, since Chief Bevins got here. But I want you to know that even though your congregation meets outside the city, you certainly always have a home here in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. And in case anybody in our listening audience feels a need to serve, remember that we have the Fill the Truck event coming up this Saturday. Santa Claus, I heard, is going to be present for photos.
And the elf.
Yes, and the elf, again. There's going to be some little giveaways for folks who come and show up with an unwrapped present. While we were all at that event last night, somebody came by and donated eighteen bicycles that are sitting in our lobby, and we're trying to hunt her down. But we are anticipating just the biggest year we've ever had. So please come on out. If you just want to stop by, volunteer. If you've got teenage kids and they need some volunteer hours, I'm happy to sign off on those hours as well.
I'd also like to thank, you know, obviously, probably one of the top sponsors financial-wise is Kyle and Chris Cox of Cox Chevrolet. Every year, they're in. And what's impressive is Kyle comes and stays the whole time and wants to walk around. And then obviously, Walmart and the management team there that really wants to be involved, because when you pull in that parking lot, we've seen some of my friends that were going there, and they're like, what's going on? You know, they see all the police, they see all the stuff. They're not quite sure. But obviously, the sponsors and Bradenton Blues Foundation, and then our auxiliary and people that really showed up. I was so proud and impressed with all of the staff from the city that showed up, as well as everyone and the volunteers. So, you know, without that, again, it was just unbelievable. So, and I saw you on Fox thirteen. So they did a great job at presenting it last night on the news. So thank you. Appreciate you indulging me. All right, Madam Clerk?
The first item on the agenda this morning is a presentation of this certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting.
Okay. I have Mr. Williams coming forward.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Mr. Rudicil, Mr. Perry. I can attest to the event--
Who are you?
I'm sorry, Lance Williams, Chief Operating Officer for the city. I can attest to the event last night. I had the opportunity, served last several years to attend. It's a great event, great participation by all. Glad that we have it, so grateful that we can be a part of it. So I encourage more to attend as the years pass on. So thank you all for doing that. So in the spirit of kind of recognizing some folks, I have a couple folks that I want to recognize. But first, as the year kind of comes to an end, I wanted to recap our financial overview. Just real quickly, there's been some talk kind of throughout the years, questioning our personnel, kind of questioning our financial status, what we do with the money, and so on and so forth. So this is kind of a recap to just to let everybody know that we're in a very good place and managed by very good people. So just to start, we started the year in January with a Moody's upgrade of our non-ad valorem debt upgrade from AA two to AA one. In July, we had a standard emporers general obligation upgrade from AA minus to AA. So that just kind of started our year off by recognition by outside agencies to say, hey, the city of Bradenton is doing very well. Julie Santa Maria, who is a financial advisor for PFM and the city's financial advisor, had this quote that said, "The city's issuer and non-ad valorem ratings are among the highest rating categories possible." It doesn't get any better than that. So, and that doesn't happen by accident. That happens by good policies, good procedures, good fiscal management of the city's resources. So, and then lastly, our independent financial audit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two had no material weaknesses, no management letter items, no non-compliance matters, and no recommendation to improve financial management. Again, outside agency telling us we're doing the right things, we're checking all the right boxes, we're being fiscally responsible. So recently, we were awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So this really kind of caps off our financial year. I mean, again, another outside agency looking at our finances and telling us we're doing a very good job. So I'm going to read you a couple of things that they sent us, and then I want to recognize a couple of people that really truly made this happen. So the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the city of Bradenton for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The report has been judged by impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure. I'm going to read that again, spirit of full disclosure, meaning transparency. We're disclosing everything to them, and they realize that we're doing a very good job. So to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. So that is their news release. This is the actual letter from the GFOA to Mayor Brown. Dear Mayor Brown, we are pleased to notify you that your annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two qualifies for GFOA's certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Again, the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. It doesn't get any higher than that. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. Not said by Lance, not said by Mr. Perry, not said by council or mayor. This is said by the Government of Finance Officers Association. When a certificate of achievement is awarded to a government and award a financial reporting achievement, otherwise known as FAFRA, no quiz afterwards to remember that, is also presented to individuals or department designed by the government as primarily responsible for having its earned certificate. We hope that you will arrange for a formal presentation of the certificate and award of a financial reporting achievement and give appropriate and give appropriate publicity to the notable achievement. So this is our opportunity to give that noticeable achievement. Now, these two individuals absolutely hate public recognition. If you hear screaming in the hallway, it's probably them beating me up in the hallway. Just let it happen. It's part of the process. But if I can get Linda Guth and Heidi Wornamundig to come up here, please. So Heidi, who has recently been promoted to our Assistant Finance Director, congratulations. And then Linda Guth, who's been with us for how many years?
Almost twenty-five.
Almost twenty-five. She thinks she's retiring in five years, so if we can work on extending that, that'd be great. But both of these individuals not only put together our annual financial report, but during that process, they also found ways to improve it. So this was the first year, and I know this means a lot to us in finance department, this is the first year that Lynn does not come in during the Thanksgiving weekend to work on the financial report. So what everybody doesn't see is the hard work and the dedication by these two individuals to ensure that we're doing everything appropriately, the weekends that are worked, the late hours that are worked, the working from home that is done. A lot of people don't see that. A lot of people need to recognize that that happens. While finance isn't always exciting, everybody wants to, you know, point fingers, say that they know how finance works, but these two individuals truly manage our finances to the highest level, as recognized by several different outside organizations. So what we did today was I went ahead and printed the certificate, and I had the mayor, council, and Mr. Perry sign it as a recognition for us to say thank you for your hard work and dedication. I know this is a loaded question, but do either of you want to say anything?
Thank you very much.
Stay up here for a second, obviously. Stay up. I'm going to start out, and I can agree with Lance that, you know, I didn't see Linda here this Thanksgiving, where there's times I'll walk around inside and come to get something or do something in my office, and it's late at night or on a Saturday or something, and the light's on. So I'll walk around the corner and say, go home, go home, or bring her something. But, you know, that shows that obviously dedication and trust and what's going on, because, and caring. And obviously, that's very important to all of us. And, you know, we may be the ones that sometimes get beat up on things that aren't true up here, but we appreciate what you do. And I know you take it personal if somebody says something also. But, you know, let us take the spears if we need them. But, and I'm also going to say another thing that I think was very important when I became mayor. And, you know, we had a great, longtime clerk and treasurer that turned into the city administrator that was very detail-oriented and all of that. But as we know, when you have any type of management change or administrator change, you want to bring people in from the outside, because after a few months, you own it. And when Mr. Perry came in, we did just that. We brought out an outside agency to look at what we've done, what we can do, and how we can get better. And I think that really shows with what you guys have done, what the entire staff has done. And there was no issues then, even though we had, you know, one individual throwing spears at us that really was uncalled for, and really sometimes didn't make your job fun. And that was throughout the building, and that was throughout the city. And I'm glad that this council now has let the policies and procedures that we have and the transparency run the cycle. And this shows that why we should do that. And that was important to me, coming in as mayor. That was important to Mr. Perry coming in and getting the right people in the seats to do it. And I'm proud of our city. I'm proud of our council that has basically let that process go, and I'm proud of the staff. So I appreciate what you do every day, and also on the days that, you know, you might not should be here, but you want to get it done. So that's showing that you love your job and you'd do anything for this city. And obviously, twenty-five years, and, you know, we'll celebrate that in twenty-five years. But thank you for what you do. Mr. Perry?
Mayor, just briefly, I want to express my appreciation to Linda for her knowledge, her dedication, her hard work, and her longevity with the city. She was one of the first people that I met at the city and worked diligently with in July, which is budget cycle. And I got the quick impression that if Linda was to leave, the lights would be turned off, the doors would stay locked, and people wouldn't get paid. And it wouldn't heal. That's not a good thing. But she kind of got me through that period of time. Then, of course, with Mr. Kelly's transition, who had been a long-term finance director and his substantial knowledge of the city's finances and working with Mr. Kelly and the past financial team that did a great job, that was a transition for Heidi. And Heidi's a certified public accountant, very experienced, but made a transition from the private sector to the public sector. And with Tom leaving, we were a little bit unsure about our, what they called CAFR at the time, now it's the AFR. And this is a kind of a certification that's related to how good that transition has occurred. And to be able to handle that complex accounting, making a transition when you come from someplace else, it speaks volumes to what she's been able to do, both at a professional technical level, as well as to the benefit for the city. And lastly, I just want to say, that relationship of our elected officials supporting our finance, we call it the finance department, but really, you're talking about an accounting component. We're talking about a budgetary component and ultimately, a finance component as well. That's kind of what makes up our back office. They like seeing you guys come down the hallways. They know you're engaged. They don't mind you asking questions and things like that, and they're always there to answer them. So I think it's a total team effort. Mr. Williams has done a great job for us and all of the folks that work over there. So I appreciate it, and it's an integrated effort. You know, we have a lot of, some finance work going on over at Public Works, our largest department, and PD and the like. And so it's a fairly significant undertaking that a lot of times you guys don't see the sausage getting made, but it's good sausage. Let's not leave it with that, yep.
All right. Well, if there's no further, we want to get a picture. So let's everybody, let's go down. Let's go down.
You guys want to get in the middle, and then we can back up right to it? Yeah, I think so.
Maybe they bring them up.
See how it comes out.
Wait on the left foot, back foot.
That's right, back foot.
Lean on the back foot enough.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk?
The next presentation on the agenda is employee retirement recognition.
Mayor?
Mr. Perry?
I could ask a couple of people to come on up, and that would be Jeannie Roberts and Jim McClellan. Since we're on the subject of recognition and accolades, we have some, obviously, good people that have come and are here, and we also have some great folks that have come and are leaving. And I thought it was important to recognize on behalf of the council, the executive team staff, the citizens, overall, the great work that's been done by these two individuals, Mr. McClellan as the Public Works Utilities Director, and Ms. Roberts as our communications point person. And so I think you're all familiar with the works that's been done by them over the years. Jim has thirteen years with the city and is retiring. And Jeannie, I think you're about, what, five and a half? Yep. And Jeannie's going to be moving to Costa Rica, are we talking about? Yep. And Jim's going to be staying local. So one will be a long-distance phone call, the other one you'll see in the supermarket, probably, right? But they've done great work, and you're all familiar with the work they've done, the type of work it is, the pride it brings to the city, the information that's bought to our citizen tree, the projects that are bought to our citizen tree and the area. And each one of them have given a hundred and ten percent. They've left everything they have out in the field. They make, you know, a lot of times eighty decisions a day. And in our business, if you've made seventy-five good ones, then you're batting really good batting average and everything. Things can go wrong in our business, as we all know, and it's difficult and challenging. But they've risen to the occasion. Their staffs have done a tremendous job. They've done excellent management. Jeannie has been part of the fiber of the community, getting to know everybody, Jim the same thing, and developing a staff of almost two hundred and sixty-three employees, I think. Technical people, blue-collar people, white-collar people, administrative people, and the like. And they've done really well. And some of those awards that were, you know, we talked about earlier, the finance part, Public Works has things to do with that as well. So we've got a couple of things as far as, these are gifts from the council to provide our retirees, and they're near their hearts. I hope they're from the council and from the administration and the mayor, of course, as well as moreover, the citizens of Bradenton, I think. So we all know that Jeannie kind of has a sports background. She was a writer, I think, in Cleveland, covered a lot of Cleveland's professional teams before she got here, was probably a pioneer in the locker rooms of male people, where, you know, athletes were professional, the Cleveland Indians, I think you covered them pretty extensively. And so she's a baseball fanatic, too. And as you go in her office, you see the pictures of, you know, Cleveland Stadium. What do they call it, the mistake on the lake? Isn't that what they kind of refer to it as?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's right there on-- Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's right there on, on, on the Jake. That's it. That's what I was looking for. Yep. But she's also been a, a local baseball supporter hugely. And so we have this Pittsburgh Pirates jersey for her with her most name on the back with the City of Bradenton emblem that this, this is given to her with heartfelt appreciation for the great work she's done. And again, on behalf of the people I cited, thank you so much for the great work you've done.
Mr. Perry to that, and with the jersey, and Jeannie and I talked a little bit yesterday. I talked with the Pirates. And Pirates do have a Dominican league down there, close to that area. So she's already have a possibility of maybe still covering some baseball. So they were excited when they heard that. So, because they, they obviously love Jeannie.
Right. And we're doing reception for Mr. McClellan and Jeannie after council meeting in the auditorium. We will have light, light snacks and food and some, some beverages. Mr. McClellan's kind of got a more formal recognition and gift. And this is a nice, beautiful plaque that we got that kind of memorializes and, and recognizes Jim for the great work he's done. Of course, it says Bradenton Friendly City with our, with our sunshine seal on the top and sunglass seal, I should say. Jim McClellan, Public Works and Utilities Director, 2010 through 2023. 13 years of dedicated service to the City of Bradenton. Thank you for your passion, hard work, expertise and accomplishments. A job well done with many thanks. Mayor, City Council, Administrative Leadership Staff, Public Works Staff, and the citizens of Bradenton. So with that, that's the small token of our appreciation and great work you've done. My job is done. If they'd like to say?
Yeah. And relax. If you guys want to say something, obviously Jim came on just before I got on the council in 2013. And when the opportunity came, you know, to the council to, to fill the position, we had a couple of interviews. And there was no doubt who, who I supported in going through that. And I know that there's been a lot of phone calls back and forth that you won't miss. But, you know, there was some things that, you know, one day driving on Third Avenue, coming across Ninth and, you know, the weeds on the, the intersection there in the middle. And I'm thinking, okay, somebody's getting them. And then I said, Jim, well, great job of getting them done. He goes, yeah, that was me. You know, you had your jacket, you had your shirt on because trying to help out, you know, would do anything. You know, we're proud of that. And we're, we're definitely going to try to use, utilize your institutional knowledge in the near future because that means a lot. And I think you actually did stuff before that with another company and we hired you away from that company. So you've had more than those 13 years and it's greatly appreciated. And then obviously Jeannie and I've had a, a little different of a relationship because she's right in the office there and, and going through things. And, and just, you know, five and a half years goes by quick. And I think hopefully the last little bit has been good, you know. And some of the other was things that nobody deserved to take on both of your parts. So we appreciate, you know, you doing that and hopefully going out on a high note. And retirement doesn't mean you go away. It just means you're not here every day, but you still come around. So we appreciate that. And any other comments, Mr. Kramer?
Well, I don't think Jeannie will. She's going to be in Costa Rica.
We're going to be able to look on the Pirates website and see stuff.
I just want to thank both of you. Jim, obviously I've known you for a lot of years from my, you came on as in 2010. I sort of got promoted to captain and had to deal with a lot of the administrative staff around the city. And thank you for always helping us out with the police department whenever we needed it. Jeannie, thank you so much. I will be emailing you my council corner for edits from you. And please send it back to me and then I'll send it to Tiffany and we'll go from there. Thanks. And good luck to both of you.
All right. Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I, I don't know if I should take anything. There probably are two people I bug the most. You're both retiring at the same time. But you, you both have been so wonderful and so responsive. And you, you've really done it in a personal way too. You're going to be very, very missed. Jeannie, you were like my personal chat GPT writing all my stuff. And Jim, you were always, as the mayor just said, you know, if, if it needed to get done, you did it, even if you had to do it. And we're going to really miss you. So good luck. Wish you all the best.
Go to Ms. Coachman.
I, I agree with you, Vice Mayor Coker. These two are probably a bug the most. I am also going to be sending my council, you know, so you can, you know, make sure it sounds all right and I don't make a fool of myself to Tiffany. A lot is leaving us. A lot of what makes this city run and, and, and what keeps the city's image, you know, positive because it's so much negative. Jim, you, you make sure that all the things that the city needs done, because your department covers it all pretty much. It really does. Your department is the face of the friendly city. They're the ones out there. And, and you worked extremely hard with, I'm just going to be personal, me, in terms of trying to change the narrative about how the city views a certain part of this city. If I call you and say, hey, you know, this is, this needs attention, it was done. I don't care what time of night it was or the weekend. I even rode with you. We went to pick up recycle for someone that had complained it hadn't been picked up in a few weeks. And that was a Saturday morning. And Jeannie, it's tough keeping the image of the friendly city positive. It's tough. Even though in reality it shouldn't be, it's tough. And you, you held it. You really did. You were the, your department. It was just you. Now you have, you have some help and you're leaving us. Well, the best of the best to, to you both. Jim, yes, you'll be close. I still have your number. If you change it, I will still find it. And Jeannie, we can always FaceTime. And don't worry, Mavis will say hi to you.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
This touches a little bit about my, my council or my ward comments. And I think I'm actually like, it's Christmas, it's the end of the year. Please forgive me. But as the newest person, to the extent that I thought I was a hard worker, I liken it to like a glacier. And I'm at the tip top, the little thing that you can see. And beneath it is this massive mountain that's just supporting everything from the bottom to the top. And so to the extent that I'm going to miss you because of your hard work and dedication, your retirement is well deserved. And I'm happy for you both. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby?
Great. I'm sorry.
That's why.
Not goodbye. See you later.
My grandmother had a saying, which was people are blessings, some when they come and some when they go. But I don't think it's a blessing that we're losing you all. Thank you for always being on that end of the phone when I called, when someone was screaming at me because this hadn't gotten done or that hadn't gotten done, or how dare you post that kind of picture or what have you. I want you to know from the bottom of my heart how much I have appreciated the dedication you've shown our citizens, the love that you show the city. And I'm going to miss you personally very much.
Thank you. Any, any comments?
I wanted to add one thing. I'm doing much better putting my earrings on now, right?
Helping out. Jim?
I would just like to thank all of you. It's been an honor to serve the city, to work with you all. And Jeannie and I consider ourselves Thelma and Louise. Vehicle has started and it's going to go over the cliff. But I will point out that in the back window of my truck, I have my I Love This City sticker. And it will stay there forever because I do love this city. It's my adopted home. And everybody that's here is my family. So I will miss you all.
Thank you. Jeannie?
Thank you for all the kind words. I want to, I'm, I'm personally very grateful to Sharon Beauchamp, who hired me five and a half years ago, so I could come to this city and be with my parents for the last chapter of their lives. And since I got here, I came to love this city and, and five and a half years. And it, I'm so appreciative of the opportunity to be a public servant in Bradenton. And I will miss you all. Thank you so much for, for the kind words and gestures and, thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Perry?
Mayor, I just got one question for Jim. Where's Mike?
All right. So let's, let's.
And let's be clear. You, you have a lovely wife who also works in a different department from yours. And she's such a lovely lady. And you have her, you, we call her Mike.
Well, if you, yeah, do not ever try to call her Michelle. It won't go over well. If anybody calls our house and asks for Michelle, she doesn't exist. It's a long story, but she's, she's the middle of five daughters. And by the time she was born, her father said, I don't care. We're calling this one Mike.
Let's get a picture of the group. And then I'd like to get an individual picture with Jim and an individual picture with Jeannie.
That's great. Mayor, on the photographs, I see a lot of people that, that Jim's folks back there that have, you know, been important to his career, important to the department, important to all of us and everything. So could we, I suggest we take a picture that like we did with council in the back and, and the two retirees, myself, and then we'll bring their folks up and then some individual pictures. Can we do it that way?
Perfect. Thank you.
Because I think Jim would like to have his, his team in there.
Let us know if you can. I, I know Jim's kind of a tall guy. And I'm kind of not.
You want to switch?
Nope. Yeah. All right. Perfect. Yep. Let's get some individual. Jeannie, you can go one side and Rob on the other side. Or do you want to go on the other side of the camera?
I was not paying attention.
A little bit closer.
Individual Jim, then with, then with other people.
If I could ask all the folks from Public Works that are here. Since we got a tight group, you probably want to do 45 degree angles.
Old Mills, Perry.
Really have too much, guys.
It's really interesting that engineers don't understand angles.
Wow.
I know. That was, that was.
Thank you guys coming down too.
So I, I'm very happy to introduce you all to my wife, Mike McClellan. Birth certificate says Carol.
Thank you for coming down. So one more picture. We got to get one more picture.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Do you guys want to get more closer to center so we can get Bradenton in the middle?
Thanks.
Okay. This time we'll move on to citizen comment and I'll read a statement. And I want to read this. And there's been some confusion, maybe a little bit, not by us, but by others that, you know, when to talk and when not to talk under citizen comment and public hearings. But citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda items, agenda items, future agenda items, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearing at the appropriate time. So on the agenda, it actually does say when there is public hearing. So anything now that you want to talk about, and I only have two comments cards. So we'll call those up at this time. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes. The first card I have, I can read Dennis and, and it, but I can't read the last two cursive writing. So, okay, Trality, okay. So if you don't mind coming up and state your name and address for the record, we appreciate you being here. And you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Dennis Clover, Trality. We're sponsored by Exodus Community Resources. And we were able to give a concert this year because of his experience with prostate cancer. And he wants to get that message out. So I will let him talk about it. Mr. Dennis quote.
Yeah. Can't give you exact, this is my wife. Can't give you exact dates and times. But I'm thinking maybe two years ago, I was diagnosed with prostate cancer. And I went through all the steps and I took my final shot months ago. So I'm good to go right now. And so I give God all the praise and the glory for that. What I want to do with my life now though, I want to try to, because men are afraid to go to the doctors, I just found out. We do not like to go. Women can go. We, we see a needle, whatever, we freak out. So I'm dedicating this to all the men. We just did a concert downtown. It was a great success. We donated most of the profits to cancer research. But I'm talking to all the men and I want to do another concert, but I need some help. And I want to let men know, go get your PSA number, because I didn't even know what that was. And then if they can catch you early, if it doesn't get in your bloodstream. How many people you say die of it? This is my wife.
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand die every year.
And it's preventable.
And it's preventable. And my motto last year was, somebody's going to die of cancer, prostate cancer, but you don't have to. So men, that's what I'm trying to do. So through the music, I'm the founder of Trality, I want to reach people and let men know. Get your, you can just give blood. They can check it out. And if you, PSA number is supposed to be four. If it gets over that, you need to go in. Mine was like 10. The doctor says my body was screaming cancer. And so we did it. So we're just going to give you a little sample of what we do to try to encourage people. Y'all ready guys?
All right.
Well, I'm singing Mary. Oh, Mary, don't you weep. Tell Martha not to moan. Tell Martha not to moan. I'm singing Mary. Oh, Mary, don't you weep. Tell Martha not to moan. Tell Martha not to moan. Pharaoh's army, Pharaoh's army drowned in the sea, drowned in the Red Sea. I'm singing it, Mary. Oh, Mary, don't you weep. Tell Martha not to moan. Tell Martha not to moan. Thank you.
Call up Kimla Morrell, second card. Call up Timla Morell, second card. As we know, we don't comment until after all the comments are done, then we'll comment.
All right, first I want to say happy birthday, Jesus. I wore his party dress, yes. But I want to come and say, uh, a couple of years ago, I've, five-two-one, 12th Avenue West is where I live. And 12th Avenue was horrible. We had drugs, crime, um, just all kinds of prostitution. When you drive down there, it was like they were selling crack like Big Macs from McDonald's. So it was just a lot going on. And I came to the city, um, had some neighbors behind us, we came to the city, and told you guys what was going on, how bad it was, and you listened. Not only did you listen, you guys heard us, and not only did you hear us, you guys took action. So now when I drive down my street, my neighborhood, it's quiet. You guys have cleaned up the houses that they were, abandoned houses they were living in, um, code enforcement. I want to thank each and everyone listening to me. Thank you, um, Councilwoman Pam Coachman, and just to everyone. I also want to thank Chief Bevan. Thank you. Yes, um, they, she had her officers come out, check on us, come out to our community meetings that we had at Exodus Community Resources. So our streets are so much safer. I can sit outside with my grandkids, we can, it's just, thank you. I emailed the, um, the neighbors and I, you know, I said I was coming here and I, did you want to say anything? And they just said, "Thank you. Thank you for listening, thank you for taking action." And now that it's all cleaned up, we gonna get some flowers, right? Remember that last conversation we had? So we gonna do some community buildup through Exodus Community Resources, um, listen, and we are in a community, we're helping at-risk kids, so, um, we need help to help others, so please support us, and thank you again, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Also, let me give a shout out to Officer Williams, Officer Plante, Officer Tels, who calls all the time, and, um, uh, ooh, I'm forgetting somebody, Paolo, Officer Paolo. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, at this time I don't have any other cards, so we'll move on to council comments on that. And I'll just start out, um, talking about the first speaker that talked about prostate and that. One of the good things we do have in our city is we have, uh, kind of a preventative through our HR. We have a health fair every year and we try to get information out, so it is very important because if you would have found it at a five instead of a ten, there might have been easier treatment, or if you know you're at a one, two, or three, you know, and those type of things, so, you know, and I know and I agree with you on, from the man's standpoint, oh, it's just to rub a little dirt on it and suck it up, you know? Where we know that our spouses and the women of the world sometimes are a little smarter than us about, you know, body telling. I used a couple of terms there, I knew I could throw them out, but no, and it's not, it's funny to talk about things or it's laughing to say, hey, but it's serious about let's get stuff done. And whatever message you can get out is important to say preventative part of it. And I know that's one thing that through our HR at the city, we're always given those preventative measures and trying to do things. And myself and at this time, Councilman Kramer sit on the insurance committee and, you know, we're probably gonna be trying to do something, you know, with some other things preventative and maybe have a special meeting soon. But, um, anything you can do, and I appreciate you bringing that to light today, and, you know, because again, uh, finding that stuff early, it's curable now and even preventable in some cases, so, but we appreciate that. And then also, um, to Ms. Morell, I mean, I appreciate you coming, and I know that was one of the most important things, and other things that are happening throughout your neighborhood, as Ms. Coachman knows, government's slow. Um, you know, there's certain things we can address right away, but, you know, as far as the neighborhood has to take pride in what they have while having help from the government. And there's some, um, other projects with our City Park project that's happening in that area, with other things that will hopefully come with that, um, really working with Rogers Gardens that can show pride, and, you know, and one of the things that, that working with the school district, I've been at several meetings lately with the school district, and we've got great staff at our three Title I schools in the city of Bradenton. But we have three Title I schools in the city of Bradenton. What are we gonna do to get, to not be Title I schools? You know, and that's what it comes down to, neighborhood pride, working with, with the staff, the government, the children, the school district, and everybody wants to, but if they, the children have a sense of value, the neighborhood will be better, and also they'll do better, they'll do, and they'll have something to see for the future, so. You know, a lot to come in all of the city, but I think Ward Five in your area deserves, you know, a lot more at times, and because we want to help the children that become us, and give them the pride what they can do. So, um, I appreciate you coming here and saying that, and anything that we can do from the city standpoint and the police department, code enforcement, and I think we see that now. And we can't fix everything in a day, but we can try to, one day at a time, one child at a time, one person at a time, so, thank you for coming in that. Ms. Coachman?
Yes, thank you. You pretty much summed it all up for me, Mayor, and what I want to say. Uh, in terms of the, the first comment, so, thank you for that, thank you for the song. That praising right there kind of lifted up my spirits a bit. Uh, and it is a serious topic, and, um, in any way that we can, of course, we will, you know, help. And, and Ms. Morell, I appreciate you coming and even speaking to us and letting us know that something, something did work. And that just kind of proves how, there were two people recognized earlier. They are, they are a big part of what happened because it's communication and it's putting the people, the boots that are on the ground, Public Works, Code Enforcement, BPD, uh, those boots on the ground are what really makes that happen. And, you know, I'm just so happy to know that that area has gotten better and, and keep us posted. There are other areas that are keeping us posted. But thank you.
Thank you, yes, Ms. Barnaby?
I want to thank you for the gift of your time this morning and the blessing of your music.
Mr. Kramer?
Thank you all, really, for what you're doing, not only for your neighborhood, Ms. Morell, but also for the community at large with your presentation. And I think I vote that that is the best public comment series ever.
Yes. Thank you.
All right.
I'll just say, I wanted to say this too when Pastor Don was up, but, um, it felt a little personal, but, um, I share your faith and that song was beautiful, and I, it is, it reminds me along with Pastor Don's commitment to service that, um, you can tell when someone's heart is for the Lord by the fruit, and that's your dedication and your service and your outreach. So I, I also appreciate Ms. Morell always coming to speak and sharing, and I appreciate what you're doing to get that word out for the health, um, component, so thank you.
Vice Mayor Coker?
Well, I would, in the interest of time, I will be very brief because I'm sure everybody wants to get moving, but it, it, the song was just, it was beautiful, and I do appreciate you. And I'll keep pushing for flowers, and you do too, okay? Because I love them and the, the beauty of, um, of our city is just, I feel so much joy this morning. I guess it's part of the season, but thank you for adding to that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you coming. All right, at this time we'll move on. Madam Clerk?
Staff is requesting approval of items A through V.
All right, and everyone has had their meetings with Mr. Perry to go over everything and...
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, I have had the opportunity to meet with all of the counselors. Um, uh, it's obviously a fairly lengthy consent agenda items A through V. Some of the matters are perfunctory, and then some of the matters through some, through a few of the counselors had asked that we publicly, um, basically discuss a few of those items, and, and things like the cops grant, um, for the benefit of the public, quite frankly, for them to know that we are looking at hiring additional police officers. I think it's a comforting thought. On our last speakers, we're talking about what some of those police officers can do in the communities and the like. So, uh, I leave it at this point to council to, uh, remove any items, uh, pursuant to the chair.
Ms. Barnaby?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda with the removal of item L and item S for discussion.
And any others? Or, yes? All right, is there a second? And then we can add to.
And item K, if you amend.
Okay, just let's get a second, and then we can amend it. So is there a second?
I'll second it.
Coker, all right. So, um, Ms. Coachman, you'd like to add to that?
Yes, I would like to also add item K, just for the public's interest.
Oh, I, thank you. I looked and they were both, actually, Ms. Coachman is correct. I meant item K, but I just saw police encircled item.
So do you, okay, so do you want L, S, and K, or just...
Um, I personally, it was item K and item S and...
Okay, not L, so...
Not L, and I, so I will, I will amend my motion to be item K and item S, as in Sam being removed, if the secondor will agree to that?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a friendly amendment to also pull N.
N, okay, all right. All right, N, so is that...
That's amenable, yeah.
Okay, so the motion will accept S, K, and N, and secondor agrees? Okay. So we have a motion to pull S, K, and N for discussion by Ms. Barnaby and seconded by Vice Mayor Coker. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Ms. Barnaby, you want to start, talk about yours first?
Uh, well, I think it's important whenever we have the opportunity to add to our police department, uh, that we discuss the implications of that. And I know that Chief Bevan is here. We, we need to understand, we need more police officers, but we also need to understand the financial ramifications after the grant runs out. So, I thought it was important that we discuss this. And in complete disclosure, I am supporting us, I'm, I'm not saying I don't want to do the grant.
So it's just a, you know, again, we'll get discussion and then we can have a motion and move from there.
May I just also give a little preface? And I too agree with what you said, um, in terms of interest of, um, you know, what happens after, you know, and, once the, you know, anyway. But I think it's important, especially with how things have been going this morning, that the public gets to hear, you know, what we're doing is working and we need more.
Yeah, and I'll just kind of follow that up with, obviously, we know that, that public safety is really our number one goals up here when we start. You know, when you run for an elected position, it's about public safety and going down from there. So sometimes there's ways to figure out, to let others pay for portions of that at time, but knowing that there might be a time period that then we have to absorb it in, but you have time to absorb that while you're using grants and that, so I think it's very important. Chief Bevan?
Great, thank you. And as you'll see, I've, I've got my management staff here today as well. Any questions that I can't answer, I'm sure they can, they've worked very hard, putting several things on the agenda. I know you only pulled the cops grant, but what you really see is kind of a trifecta of additional police services that we're looking to, um, adopt, um, going forward in, in 2024. And it really integrates quite a few, um, opportunities for funding. You didn't pull the opioid settlement, um, that, uh, that funding will help offset some of the, um, additional services that we're bringing on with, um, the homeless case manager, um, with the CDBG grant where we're funding an officer to deal with blight and whatnot. And I bring that up because as much as, um, as an agency, you, you try to keep everybody generalist, sometimes specialties matter, um, because specialties put, you know, specific attention on, on issues and problems in our area. The, the cops grant, um, I was very pleased we applied for that, um, that we received that. This is actually the, the third time during my tenure that we've received this grant, and I was actually surprised, I was, um, talking to a, another chief down south and, and he was excited, uh, because it was the first time in, uh, over a decade that they had received the, the cops grant. I'm like, oh, well, I, we get it every time we put in, so. Now granted, they were asking, they were asking for more, um, and so obviously we have some sort of, uh, magic, magic sauce going on. As you all know, uh, the cops grant is, is a matching grant, and it's geared towards, uh, community policing and the advancement of community policing. And what they do is give us the ability to interpret community policing, um, to our city, and, and what we think our city could use that funding for and basically use those officers for. Um, I'm happy that our staffing levels are getting to a, um, to a point where, you know, I, I'm, I'm pretty confident, I'm not gonna say I'm a hundred percent that next year, at some point when I stand in front of you, I'm gonna tell you that we're fully staffed. And so with that, we're trying to look at some opportunities to increase our level of service. Specifically, we want to focus on some of the things that we've seen within our region and with our county, which is violent crime. I know that you all have the benefit of seeing some of the watch commander reports. We're seeing, um, some more, um, bad people with illegal guns. This isn't the good folks with the legal guns, but the bad folks with the, you know, the illegal, uh, weapons out there, um, committing some crimes that we'd like to, to aim our resources towards better, um, on a seven-day-a-week, um, twelve-hour-a-day, um, attack, so to speak. I'm, I'm not afraid to say that word. We're looking to create a crime reduction team. This group will be comprised of, uh, two sergeants and a minimum of eight officers working those hours. They're gonna focus on those violent crimes and other issues really that most affect our community, and that can, um, really give us a higher quality of life. We submitted that to, um, you know, the, the Justice Department, they agreed, they said, "Here you go. Here's some money." We recognize that for this year, um, it's a non-budgeted expense. What I would tell you that if you look closely over the, and I apologize for not having that attachment in your paperwork, that it just came in late in the day, I, I apologize, that was, that was my fault. Um, but you'll see, uh, we feel that for year one, by the time we hire them and train them, we're not really looking at much of a, a budget adjustment. We are looking for three cars. I could also tell you that that will probably come very late during this, um, year end. It, you know, when you hire officers, you gotta put them in a, a motor vehicle. We, uh, we have increased our fleet, I will acknowledge that, um, but it's, it's a necessity at, at this stage, that's one of the things, um, why I think that we're, we're reaching our maximum capacity. Not only did we have a, a very successful contract, um, very good pay raises, all, obviously all the officers agreed, it was, uh, never seen that kind of vote before, um, but we offer very good benefits, and one of the benefits is, is a take-home car. It, it generally takes us about six months, six to seven to eight months when we order a car to get that car, so I kind of wanted to get the ball rolling on that, um, sooner rather than later, and that attaches to the cops grant because I'm gonna hire three officers, I'm gonna put them in uniform, and I want to put them in cars. We, we would all, I'm sure collectively, the staff, ask you to support this. Crime's, crime's not gonna get better anywhere. It's just gonna get worse. It's, um, you know, nobody ever stands up here and says, "Hey, let's, you know, reduce our police force," but I think we're being judicious about it. I'm not here asking for five, I'm not here asking for ten. We only ask for officers when we have the ability to partially fund them. Um, I think we do well with what we have, but we're growing as a city, we're growing as a downtown, there's more that we want to do, particularly in this area, there's more we want to do. You just heard her, I, I'd like to do more engagement, and, um, three officers may not sound like a lot, but, but it's getting there. Um, it's getting us to, to where we need to be. The CRA has been incredibly generous as well, it's provided us with the opportunity to put more officers in those areas, and this, I think, just puts some icing on the cake.
And I also think that, you know, you talk about some of the different divisions or how you're gonna break it up, there's also a great collaboration with our sheriff's office and others, off, uh, police forces in the area that, that do that and we work together with because we know that, you know, the criminals don't know, well, this side of the street is Bradenton, this side is sheriff's office, so it gives that great collaboration with them as well.
Mayor, that's very important for everybody to know. Um, so over the last six months, we've actually integrated, uh, two of our folks with, uh, two units that they already have stood up called the Violent Crimes Task Force. They operate basically, um, in the same hours, the, you know, the same schedule that this unit plans to operate and what, um, the sheriff and I see this as, as a force multiplier. Um, we'll have our squad, they'll have... We'll have our squad, they'll have their squad, incidents that happen throughout our county and city. You're already seeing it, I don't know if you guys have seen, we're helping them, they're coming over and helping us. This is just the next step, and it shows our regional commitment to, like you said, and nobody knows really what the boundaries are, and it shows our regional commitment to, you know, kind of biting the head off of issues as soon as they arise and not having to wait till Monday morning or on a Thursday or when squads come back to work, we're going to have people out there 24/7.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I just want to say the reason I wanted it pulled was because when I had the, my talk with Mr. Perry, I didn't have the attachment to look at. And then I saw it kind of late, you know, but I still think it's important, especially with the kinds of conversation we've had in the meeting this morning. I think it's, it's really a good thing to have this conversation in publicly, in, in public so that they can understand the need, and I'm fully supportive, fully supportive.
Okay. Ms. Barnaby?
I just wanted to have all of the information brought out so that, not only for our benefit, but for the benefit of the citizens to see that we are working to be proactive, particularly with some of these very difficult, difficult things that are occurring in our community. There's plenty of good people in Bradenton, and we also seem to have attracted some ne'er-do-wells as, as well. So I, I, I want you to know I do support us getting this grant, and I do appreciate everything that the ladies and gentlemen of the police department do on a daily basis.
Is that a motion to approve?
I'll be happy to make the motion to approve, a motion to accept the 2023 cops grant funding.
Which is K on the agendas.
Correct.
Second.
The second.
We got approval. Ms. Barnaby's second, I heard Mr. Kramer first. So hearing no further discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Barnaby, you wanted to also have S pulled?
I had item S pulled as well because I think we need to have a little public discussion about it, if we could, please.
I couldn't let you get away with a...
Mr. Mayor, if I could just briefly be heard.
My microphone, Mr. ...
I spoke with several counselors and I suggested Mr. McClellan or Ms. Clayback come up and explain a little bit about the MPO process. In discussing the six items that are contained on that MPO recommendation, I pointed out that MPO, according to Kim and Jim, was putting a focus on local road projects and that this really was the lower hanging fruit. Things like the, the trail have been on the, the state DOT plan for a long time. And I'll let Jim get into the details of it, but I think this was important to also explain to the public how it is that we do some transportation, roadwork, partnerships with, with some of the various entities that help us with the funding of that, also that some of these roundabouts are in our house, I shouldn't say our house, our, our state delegation requests, direct appropriation requests within the budget as high priority items, and Jim can take it from there.
All right, and before you start, Jim, I just want to say, one of the things that we always work at is timing, and that's always been something for me. Government takes too long. We know the sidewalks to schools, how long that took, but it's finally there. So some, some of these things we work through seem like you talk about them and then years go by. But these are things that we're working, and obviously funding is important, and that's why it was a priority for our legislative this year, and I think it's important. We know this stuff will get done, it's just the process. So I appreciate, you know, what you've done.
And just lastly, on that point, the mayor and I, several counselors and, and Jim as well and other folks have worked closely with our government affairs lobbyists, basically, to put the packages together and meet with our delegation, and in meeting with our local legislative delegation, I think those projects represent about, the roundabouts at least $5 million in a, in a transportation funding package that's consolidated. And I believe, I believe Representative Gregory is the sponsor of that direct house appropriation.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. So essentially, this is a process that happens every year with the MPO. This is different this year because it's the first year where they have put a focus on local roadwork, not just state roadwork. So you'll see in some of the supporting documentation that we've separated out, there's two projects that are state load, state road related, 15th Street signalization, and we have a placeholder for what we call the LeCom Vota Study, the, that is currently underway, to have a placeholder for us to put a project in there that we think we can, can do in the short term that would be part of the overall solution because ultimately that LeCom study is being generated to establish a list of priorities that will all be interconnected rather than one large project that's $30 million that nobody's ever going to be able to fund. So we talked with the MPO, they agreed to allow us to put a placeholder in for us to identify a project that we can add in. But the local roadway work is, is mostly related to, the first priority we had listed was the 11th Avenue within Village Green, and I had a typo in my email to you, it said, instead of 68, it's 63rd. But essentially, that's a project where we would be part of the overall trail system that would get bicyclists off of Manatee Avenue as a means to be traveling east-west in the city to get out to the islands. And so on 11th Avenue, it would be basically a reconstruction of the roadway in order to generate a 10-foot wide trail system along that roadway, separate from the roadway. And it's about a $2 million project altogether because of the overall reconstruction that's required associated with it. The next three on the priority list, Second Avenue and 24th Street East, that's a roundabout that we already have designed. It's, it's ready to go. And the other two roundabouts, one at Southern Parkway, this is essentially adjacent to Prime Elementary, a very heavily traveled intersection, large Parkway that has the room for us to be able to pull this off without any property acquisition. And likewise, at 17th and 20, 17th Avenue and 22nd Street West, that's one of our five-way intersections that can be dangerous, and it's also part of, on a, on a school route. So part of that is overall package. Those three were bundled as well off of this, this MPO list as part of a legislative appropriation that Mr. Perry spoke of, and we're hopeful for, for that to be. Because those are things that we think can be done quite quickly, once, once approved. 13th Avenue West, we have a project that, it's essentially from Ninth Street West to Third Street West. The city owns enough right-of-way on the south side of that roadway where we think we could put on-street parking and relocate the sidewalk and be able to provide some additional parking that might ultimately be part of the city park project as well. There's room for about 20 or so parking spaces that would be part of that, but it's a reconstruction of the roadway component. And then lastly, 21st Street East, it's a project where we're looking to do some on-street parking. This is adjacent to the National Guard Armory where there is a lot of on-street parking that occurs now. It can create congestion for, for folks. But as part of that, we also want to create a trail connecting into Norman Lloyd Park. There's right-of-way undeveloped at this point that we could put a trail system in that could allow folks from that development to the west side of Norman Lloyd to have the ability to access the park without having to go all the way around on 13th Avenue. So th, those are the projects that we've identified on the local streets.
And I think, you know, we look at, and you said a great statement that I think people really need to hear, is that sometimes you put in these big projects that are miles and miles and miles long and in the tens of millions of dollars, and they never happen because there's no way to figure out how to get that much money to do the project, and it would really disrupt a lot of areas at a time. And I heard something many, many years ago, and I didn't understand, or actually drove on it from the interstate to Myrtle Beach, and you're going on these little two-lane roads, and then all of a sudden you come to this superhighway for about five miles, and then it goes right back down to the little road. Well, the senator of that state at the time realized, I wasn't going to get the whole 60 miles done, but he figured a way to get five miles at a time done through the government. And now I think it's almost complete after 30 years, but it still got some of it done. You made, when you said that, it made me think to get out to the public. Some of these projects, if we can get a project here done, a project there, it may not seem as big of a deal right now with the traffic flow, but as we get more of them done, it'll flow together. And then also, you're not disrupting an area as much as you would if you did two miles of a street. And, you know, one of the things that we learned on 33rd Street Court in West is timing, obviously, that's important. But we put a bike path there. Right now, it seems like a bike path to nowhere. But as we connect everywhere else in the city, but you've got to start somewhere. And I think that's important for the public to understand. We're, we're starting it, and, you know, sometimes it seems a little quirky, but we're getting the starting of the process, so.
Yeah, and along those lines, I, I know Councilwoman Coker had a meeting last night with the Village Green Homeroes Association, and we've talked, and presented to them the idea, connected with this project that's on 11th Avenue is the idea of just striping Village Green Parkway with bike lanes. Again, it would be somebody going, why are you putting bike, it doesn't connect necessarily, but it's all part of the overall plan that will ultimately connect everything.
And in that area, there's room to do it a little bit right now.
Correct.
Right, yeah, so. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, with regard to the Village Green. So, yeah, the, so it's to 63rd, it's not even 68th?
It's from 75th to 63rd.
Is that where Village Green, basically the subdivision ends, and then it becomes county?
Then it becomes county.
Are we coordinating with the county? I mean, will we see it?
Yes, because the overall trail process is intended to continue along 11th Avenue to 51st Street, then come down to Ninth, and ultimately to 33rd Street Court, to be able to have that bike lane connected into it as well.
Oh, and I actually think that the Village Green Parkway bike lanes, I think they'd be welcome. I mean, with, as that shopping center at the end of it starts to, you know, come alive again with Starbucks, and we've got the Wawa and everything, I, I think it, you know, a lot of those people there would ride a bicycle up there, so I, I think it's great.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. I did want this information brought out. And sometimes I think when things are on the consent agenda, it doesn't get the attention paid to it, perhaps. But when I look, there's something in just about every ward, in every...
We try.
In every neighborhood. I do have to say, at 17th Avenue and 22nd Street, when I grew up here and was learning to drive, that intersection, it's, it's, I mean, I, I would rather drive on 41 than try to get through, there's, it's five points, there's, they come together. And if, the worst thing the state legislature ever did was get rid of driver training in schools. So when you get to there, if you haven't gone through driver training and you don't know who's supposed to go, it's, it's kind of like on a league of their own where Marley Hooch is getting conflicting signs and cars go and stop, go and stop, go and stop. So I'm happy to see that we're going to do something there because I think it's just, it's a disaster waiting to happen. And maybe because everybody who grew up here knows that, so they're super cautious going through there, I don't know. And I, and at, on Southern Parkway, we did have a fatality there because someone didn't stop when they were supposed to. And I think that that's going to be a, a welcome addition to that neighborhood.
Yeah, again, the, the theory behind roundabouts is not to prevent accidents, but to soften those that do happen. Instead of T-bones, they become side swipes, survivable when they do occur.
So, Ms. Barnaby, would you?
Oh, I'll be happy to make a motion to, trying to, I'm trying to under... Yes, to accept the state and local roadway MPO prioritization list as presented to us today.
Item S on the...
Item S.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mrs. Moore, all right, thank you. All right, we've had discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
And two.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Mrs. Moore?
Thank you, sir. I just thought it would be, when we were having our discussion, our meeting, I thought it would be beneficial to just, again, in the interest of transparency and, and educating our residents about what actually is, you know, specifically going on, to let either Mr. Perry or Mr. Williams talk a little bit about the funding sources that we have going on for, and... Because it might seem like a, a big-ticket item, but I think that they've worked hard to procure different sources of funding that I think would be beneficial.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor, Counselor. Briefly, the funding sources for this project, first off, the item that's on the agenda is for, for an amendment from the previous approval for the GMP on this project that was voted on November 1st. Basically, it, it didn't include the management fee, and so this amendment takes the project cost about 3.9 million. That's what it's going to cost us to remodel the PSOC to standards of a, a, an emergency operations center that is suited for the city in the former Red Cross building. It's about 13,000 square feet. The funding sources currently is that the city is responsible, obviously, to the, to the GC, the general contractor, under the C-MAR agreement for the, the GMP. We are looking at obtaining federal funding through Congressman Buchanan's office. I believe it's 1.8 on this project, 1.8 million. The, that funding has gone through the committee process and into the House budget. However, as we know, that follow national news and particularly budget news, people that need to read that stuff late at night when they can't sleep, the, the federal budget is at an impasse with its next scheduled approval date on a continuing resolution of, I believe it's January, either 15th or 19th of this year. I would imagine the federal budget process through reconciliation, the key elements that I see on the national news are not going to be whether the funding comes out for the PSOC in Bradenton out of Congressman Buchanan's office. The discrepancies deal with major policy issues regarding international and national affairs, funding Ukraine, things like that. So the likelihood of this kind of coming out this late in the game of the federal budget isn't particularly high, in my opinion. So hopefully, we'll get that 1.8 million. There are additional funding sources for some of the components that are generators or otherwise kind of standalone-type components. I believe one of the generators we're looking at obtaining grant funding for $500,000. So that's kind of a complexion of, of the 3.9 funding sources. Obviously, this facility is a core public safety facility. It is really designed to, the most modern of standards, both from technology as well as construction, resiliency. It's centrally located to serve that purpose in some of the highest ground in, in the city and some of the closest to, to, to high coastal hazard areas as well. And we think it's a significant public safety asset for the city.
As well on, on the route to a trauma one hospital?
Within a half a mile from a trauma, a, a, a level two trauma center, the, the facility for the first-in teams to be out there as well as the county utilities garages nearby and a major roadway for transportation into those areas that are most likely to probably be, sustain significant damage in the event of a, a high wind type hurricane situation or flooding, for that matter.
Or, and also any other emergency event that might happen in the community?
Right, yeah. And I, and I just point out on that front, you know, we put an emphasis into national incident management systems training and FEMA training, and we've just completed now the 191, which, which is the course that deals with operation and integration of an emergency operations center, specifically into the NIM system. It was a full day onsite course offered by the EOC that we had, I think, citywide, probably 30 to 40, about 30 people or so over there, a lot of folks in public works and the public safety components and, and otherwise. And, you know, it just, we're stepping up our game.
Right, and I think that's an important comment, stepping up the game. Right, and I think that's an important comment, stepping up the game. Um, because when you look, if something happens like it did to the south of us after Ian, and at the point it was going to hit us directly at one point, you just never know. And if we can be one hundred percent prepared and it never happens, then it's a good day. But we've got to be that prepared. Another thing also is that building will be used a little bit by our police department.
Yes, sir.
Seven twenty-four. So, it's not only just going to sit once a year, it's going to still be utilized and have the opportunity to, to mobilize for a lot of events if they happen. And also, but it still will be used on a daily basis, portion of it by the police department, to have like a closer team out there.
And, and it's really modular, meaning it could be a command and control center for a limited type of event that is unforeseen, things that are, are foreseen that may happen down in that area for, uh, planning and operations purposes for command and control. But also, um, being modular to the extent of if City Hall was wiped out, we could set up an emergency short-term City Hall out there. It has some flexibility to it as well.
All right, all right, any other questions?
Okay, I, I move to approve the, uh, guaranteed maximum price addendum to the P-SOC construction manager at risk contract with Andem Construction.
And that's the number?
I'm sorry, that's item, uh, six N on the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Moore. We have a second by Ms. Coker. And we'll start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
And three.
Yes.
Thank you, um, carries five to zero. And what we're going to do is we're going to hear the next item and then we'll take a break right after the next item. So, uh, Mr. or Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is seven A. It's a public hearing, a lease agreement for the continued use of fourteen oh five Fourth Avenue West as a historical records library.
All right, Ms. Fortner, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Corey Forton, policy planning procedure and real estate administrator. This is a public hearing to vote on whether or not City Council wishes to enter into the proposed long-term lease agreement with the Manatee County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller for the property that's located at fourteen oh five Fourth Avenue West for the continued use of the property as a historical records library. The property has been leased to the county for use as that library since nineteen seventy-eight. The proposed lease is for a term of seventy-five years. The notice of considered disposition was advertised in the Bradenton Herald on October twentieth and October twenty-seventh, as is required, pardon me, by Florida Statute one six three point three eight zero three A. The city has received no other offers or inquiries on the property in response to said notice. Florida Statute one six three point three eight zero two requires this public hearing as the lease terms contemplate no rent due, which would be less than fair market value. The public hearing was noticed in the Bradenton Herald on December first. The lease does require the lessee to improve the premises to full ADA compliance as improvements are made in accordance with the lessee's building enhancement and restoration plan, and to keep the premises in good order and repair. The tenant must also pay for utilities and must carry general liability insurance.
All right, any questions? I, I know this is something that-
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing, but, but just from the standpoint of, for the council and the public, before we go to the public hearing, um, this is something that's been worked on a while. They've had it, there's, it used to be a City Hall years and years ago. And if you haven't been there, it's got amazing research.
It was the city library.
I thought it was, at one, at one point, it was City Hall. That's what I was told, so. Before I was born, well, you, obviously, you- You set her up on that one. We'll move on, okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to open a public hearing.
Christmas is coming.
Public hearing, anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the disposition of city-owned property for under fair market value and approve the long-term lease with the Manatee County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller for continued use of the property located at fourteen oh five Fourth Avenue West, Bradenton, Florida, as a historical records library.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
And four.
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, at this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be back in five minutes. Back to order, Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is item eight A with the Community Redevelopment Agency. It's the third amendment to the Land Use Restrictions Agreement with Pearl Homes.
Okay, who will be speaking for this? All right, come on up. Welcome, if you state your name.
All right, I will.
Physician?
Good morning, everyone. I'm, uh, Chris Mannion with, uh, CRA, uh, CRA Manager. Uh, I want to first start off with, uh, great news. So, the Met, uh, over on Fourteenth is nearing its completion. So, Pearl Homes is coming to the finish line on that. Um, that is the Metropolitan. It's a hundred and ninety-nine unit workforce housing complex over on Fourteenth Street. The, um, as things go in construction, there's always some hiccups coming up on the finish line. Um, but I think this is a great, um, thing to, to be, um, finish, coming up to finishment? Finish, finishing, I'm sorry. Um, anyways, so, it's a testament to how the CRA, the city, and the private sector can work on providing, um, workforce housing for the residents of Bradenton and the CRA. So, uh, it's nearing completion on August eleventh. We'll get into the nuts and bolts. Um, the amended law was approved and executed. Uh, Delora provided, uh, for impact fees to be waived by the city and a monetary incentive from the CRA. Uh, Delora also contained a provision that the owner would obtain the certificate occupancy on or before January first of twenty twenty-four. If not, then penalties would start being administered on a monthly basis. Due to a setback with FPNL, uh, the owner informed us that they would not be able to obtain that certificate occupancy at the required date of January first. Staff is now presenting the third amendment to Delora, which allows Pearl Homes to obtain a certificate occupancy on or before March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four without penalty. It also contains language to address the reduction of CRA funding to the owner in the event that the owner receives a reduction or exemption of ad valorem taxes. Uh, Pearl Homes, uh, the city in Bradenton and CRA are all parties to Delora. If the City Council approves, it will be presented to the CRA Board at its next available meeting. CRA staff recommends approval of the third amendment of Delora. Um, Mr. Marshall Gabuti with Pearl Homes is here, if you have any additional questions or if he wants to make any comments.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do I, I, I want to make sure that I understand the paragraph that has to deal with the, um, the reduction of the payment, if there were any exemptions or reductions in the ad valorem. Are we trying to address the fact that it's going to be now, again, unimproved property for another tax year? And are we just talking about exemptions normal, normally, uh?
If, if there's any programs or that allow that exemption or a reduction of the, uh, ad valorem taxes, that's, that's, that the ownership does apply for at any time, then those reductions will be mirrored in the reductions of our monetary compensation for the reimbursement.
Mr. Perry?
Let me ask, Chris, if you know of any exemptions that are being pursued currently or otherwise available, that would take this from a taxable property to a exempt property?
There is a, um, there's no pursuing of, of it, but there is a, the Live Local, um, Act, which, um, provides, uh, they would, someone would have to, um, move forward with pursuing that. And it may, um, allow for a reduction or exemption.
When it was approved by the CRA Board or the city as a party to Delora, was it contemplated that there would be a law, uh, uh, an ad valorem application of taxes? Where would we recoup some of the money that we put into it or otherwise, um, financially, um, missed out on?
I don't believe so, but I am not a hundred percent. Because I think, I believe that legislation, if Scott can, was after that.
Yeah, if, if I could, this is, um, it was not contemplated at the time that this agreement was entered into that the legislature might enact, uh, ad valorem, uh, tax exemptions for, um, uh, private residential housing projects. Uh, but here we are. Uh, and so, when we looked at this, the, the intent of the parties at the time, I think, clearly was that the tax revenues that the CRA would be receiving through the TIF would be used to fund these incentive payments. And so, we've, we have clarified that in the agreement to make sure that that intent is carried forward. Well, I'm glad it's, that it's clarified in the agreement, but it seems like if, if it was contemplated that ad valorem would be paid, then we would have calculated the longer-term repayment and recapitalization of the city's investment or the CRA's investment in it. And now, if the legislature has acted or otherwise, those exemptions apply, then the, the predicate for that financial participation by the city and the CRA has gone away. And it seems to me that the pro forma and, uh, benefits the developer, uh, fully and doesn't recompensate the city for what they anticipated they would be receiving. Is that too complicated or get an answer on? I'm, I'm not sure I totally understand the question. Okay, here's a short answer. If we were, if we were thinking over a period of time, an example, short example, this, this project would refund a million dollars, use a round number, to the city or the CRA. And that's why we're getting into it, because we're incentivizing the short-term development and we'll recapture our money later. Now, an exemption comes along out of, out of Tallahassee, and they say, no, it's, it's not going to be ad valorem, um, taxed. And so, then the predicate, which is how we, we get our money back and recapitalize in the long term, has gone away. And really, the benefit of that endures to the developer. Wouldn't you agree? Yes, I understand what you're saying. Okay, that, that's all, it's a policy decision.
But is there any stopgaps from what happened before, what we agreed to before, in this current, and to, to stop that from happening? Or is that, they can automatically do it? And, and we, the Live Local Act sunsets in twenty thirty-seven.
Right, I mean, a, at this point, it is, it is their option under that legislation if they want to. Well, let me say this, I, I don't know for sure if they meet the eligibility requirements. We haven't, you know, we haven't really gotten into it that far. Um, but if they do, yes, they have, they have the right to, to pursue that, um, under that legislation. So, uh, to Mr. Perry's point, once, even though we might, it might, um, eliminate the incentive payments that the city or the CRA would be making, in the long run, they would then not receive the TIF funding moving forward, yes.
Ms. Coker?
Well, I, if I'm understanding everything correctly, though, I mean, it's not, it's, it's the legislature that we have to blame for this and that, you know, not, not the developer. I wouldn't see going after, am I misunderstanding?
Uh, this could be, I mean, even on a project that the CRA hasn't incentivized, that we're going to, this city and CRA is going to have the same issues on, on these affordable housing projects.
Yeah.
So, if, if they do go after that, do they, the incentives that we were giving through the CRA and city, do those go away?
Yes.
So, it kind of wa, we're not, then giving them the incentives if they're not paying a tax?
Correct, but to Mr. Perry's point, the incentives would be terminated at year ten. And at that point is where the city would be expecting to start receiving that TIF revenue, and that may not happen.
For four more years? Because it's only, it's supposed to go, is it, does it sunset in twenty thirty-seven?
It's not extended.
If it's not extended, so. So, you'd lose, if everything went away, then you'd have four or five more years before we'd start receiving some monies back. But we'd also have people living in affordable housing downtown and hopefully other incentives or spending other monies and things, so, you know.
But if I understand this correctly, there's, I could see where the argument could be made that if they didn't have to pay those taxes and were expecting this incentive from the city, they might want to double dip, so to speak. So, clear, this is kind of clarifying that we wouldn't be doing that.
That's the intent in this.
And do we have that issue in any of the other, uh, projects that we've incentivized? I don't know, I hadn't even thought about that.
Not that I, not that it had been brought to my attention.
Okay.
But we do know there's projects that, and outside of this realm, that one project I believe is in planning now, that has nothing, they're not asking for anything, but they aren't going to pay the ad valorem tax.
Right.
So, but it's going to put a hundred and sixty-eight affordable units in the city.
And how long do they, it, it's mandatory that they be affordable before they're marked?
Delora's for fifteen years.
All right, other questions, concerns, comments, a motion?
Oh, uh, let's see, what do we need? Uh, I'll make a motion that to approve the third amendment to the land, to the Lura with Pearl Homes.
All right, so there's a motion by Ms. Coker to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All right, I have Mr. Kramer has a second. All right, other discussion?
I just want to say, I, I don't think it's fully vetted, uh, as far as what the options are. And, and I just don't think that a developer that sets a pro forma and a, and a participating contributor to it, being the city or the CRA, shouldn't share in any, in any benefit that comes along later that modifies the pro forma. Otherwise, the developer is the one that endures the tot, the, the totality of, of the legislative benefit, and I think that should be shared. You know, if you look at the sand pile and there's certain things that have been done over there in lieu of, of property taxes and the like, and, and perhaps those are options. And we're getting into some technical stuff and, and, and policy, no doubt. But I, I don't know if it's prime time to make that decision on, on this project.
No, Mr. Perry, we know, you bring up the sand pile. Thirty, forty years later, we're finally getting something. On, you know, some of it's been over the years, but, you know, hopefully now we're getting to finish the sand pile, which I don't think anybody anticipated it would take that long. Um, I think that, and as Mr. Rudesell said, they're not even sure if this meets the requirement. And do you blame somebody for the time of life we're at that we didn't control? So, I don't disagree with your concept. But we also want to get these places open so people can start living in them. And, you know, again, I don't know, I've had nothing, no discussion on any of this other than what I've read through the paperwork, but, um, so I don't know. Yes, ma'am.
I guess I may be a little confused. I thought that basically what we-
I thought that basically what we were doing is saying that if the developer is getting the reduction, that we're getting the reduction too.
Yes. If that's true, then it would seem that it equalizes out, for sure. If we have to lessen our contribution or otherwise recoup it in another, in another manner, then it would seem like, then it does shift appropriately to our benefit, not exclusively to the developer's benefit. That's what I have concerns about. There's really two parts to this. One is waiving the liquidated damage provision because of non-completion of the project within a specific time, but this is the part that concerns me moreover. And if that is true, that, and maybe Mr. Rudesell can flush that out a little bit better, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding that part.
Yeah, Mr. Rudesell, let me go to Ms. Moore first, and maybe you can answer.
I was going to ask Mr. Rudesell or Mr. Moonion to clarify, because I think that, I think generally that is what's happening, is that we're just trying to offset the Live Local Act as far as reduction in ad valorem. It's going technically into a different pot, because it's CRA money, not ad valorem city money. But I'd like to know, I just want to wrap my head around the timing. When, when does that, when does that actually happen with Live Local? And also to the point of the expiration of the CRA. So when, when are we facing these obligations? Like, what is the potential risk to us? Is what I was trying to clarify. To the extent that there is, you might, you know, like, when we talk timing, there might not be, to your point, that risk that we're ever having the developer double dip.
Right, so, I mean, that was the issue that we, that we were trying to address as part of this amendment, to clarify, I mean, I don't think that was the intent of either party, clarify that there wouldn't, there wouldn't be double dipping. So to the extent that they do apply and receive the ad valorem exemptions, the CRA's contribution is reduced in like-kind. So it's net neutral. So we're not necessarily participating in the benefit, it's really net neutral to the CRA. But to Mr. Perry's point, once those, you know, that incentive payment period is over, then at that point, you know, the CRA could be impacted in terms of the TIF revenue on that project, although not any different than any other affordable housing projects out there that seek to obtain that tax relief that's available.
Any other questions?
I understand it a lot better. That explanation helped me understand it a little bit better. In the back end on the tail, the tax relief would still be there, and we really wouldn't receive a benefit, but during our contribution period of incentivizing it, we would.
Right.
It'd be equalized net neutrally, okay.
Just a quick follow-up to that explanation, because I too think that it's going to be something that we're going to move forward with. Although, good point on liquidated damages. Because the pay period is until we reach an amount, is there, is there, or to what extent is there a risk that then the CRA expires and then the city now is obligated to not only not have the ad valorem, but also make some kind of even reduced amount?
Well, the CRA's now expire in 2037, and so does the Live Local Act. So, and then, but I know that our CRA is working for some adjustments to extend it to a point, once they get the proper paperwork in. So I think that timing-wise, I think there's a lot of things that just are happenstance, that we're having to be 2037, Live Local just happens to be 2037. But it does, all of those affect, when you start to look at the overall city, everything we do is mirrored around some of the CRA money. Because as we know, the county has to agree to give us that CRA addition that we would go to the county. So in reality, even if the CRA expires, or when the CRA expires, we don't keep all the money we've been getting, we only keep our city portion, which is somewhere around 50-ish plus or minus percent. So, you know, the county right now is agreeing to let us keep that, and some of those things will be worked through as a non-CRA board member, you know, so.
But to answer Ms. Moore's question, yes, the city is the backstop for that. And we don't anticipate that, that those payments wouldn't be, that wouldn't be made by the time the CRA expires, if it ultimately does. But the city is the backstop for that, and that's why they're a party to this agreement.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the land use restrictions agreement with Pearl Homes, the third amendment. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Thank you, good discussion. Public Works and Utilities update on Fire Station Two.
Jim, you and Chief Wannan.
And I would just point out, Mayor, that we have representatives from Willis Smith, as well as Folly, I believe. And I'll have some comments if I could be heard after the presentation by Jim and Chief Gier.
Morning, Council. Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. With me is Fire Chief Gier. As Mr. Perry noted, we have representatives from Folly Bryant, as well as Willis Smith, who is the construction manager at risk, working with us on this project. We wanted to give you an update as it relates to the building design for the new fire station, as well as its current cost estimates. Don't be confused, this is not a guaranteed maximum price at this point. This is a secondary level of cost estimation that has been prepared by Willis Smith. But I want to also show you the current renderings as it relates to how the building would look. This is a rendering as you would be driving eastbound on State Road 64 with 22nd Street to the left side of the picture. Additionally, looking at that with the mast arms in place at 22nd Street for the emergency signal associated with the fire station. Looking at it directly from the south side of State Road 64. Don't get caught up in the color of the beams and things, all of those things can be finalized and modified, but this is just to give you an idea of what it would look like. And then, again, as you're entering, we intended for there to be this tower effect on the side of the building that would be part of the entryway into the city from the east side. So this is driving westbound, looking at it.
Obviously, there will be some graphics on it about fire department logo, City of Bradenton, sunglasses and stuff like that.
All of that can be finalized, absolutely.
And that's, that's simple, but it's.
But also, it's also intended to have a monument signed.
Right.
At the corner of 23rd Street as you enter in, so all of that can be finalized.
Well, I just think that, you know, sometimes when stuff gets out to the public, they, oh, that's ugly, or that's this or that, and they don't realize that this is just beginning structural look more than some of those things.
And to your point on the west end, that was a recent change, where they rotated a stairwell, just kind of mirrored the east side, the main entry.
Right.
And what that does is it gives y'all, gives us and the city the opportunity to use that portion for, like you said, signage and any kind of city seals or whatever you'd like to see.
And just on that point, Chief and I have had conversations about trying to brand the combination of the fire department and fire service for the city with the city of Bradenton itself. Obviously, we have independent fire districts, and it's important for the public to know which ones are the city of Bradenton, and, you know, we're kind of proud of what we build out there, and we should be. And so we are contemplating the appropriate signage that recognizes both entities, the organization itself, being the city, and ultimately the department, the fire department.
I drove by there yesterday, and there's been a few people asking that they've heard about it now. So when it's the appropriate time, I think we need a sign up there that, future home, and now that we may have a little bit better rendering if this is approved, you know, or, you know, concept.
And I think coming up next year in the construction phases, and I'll be talking about this shortly, as far as it relates to that screening, future home bought to you by the city of Bradenton, mayor, council, those kinds of projects, I think we do have to basically put the appropriate signage out there, so that people see that's what's getting built and what their tax money is being used for, particularly in the public safety realm.
Thank you.
But again, to just demonstrate, it is proposed to be a three-bay apparatus bay. And so to talk about the budget status, so essentially, an initial budget was established for the building based upon its square footage and a cost of, estimate of $550 per square foot for the building itself. Okay? That resulted in about $7.75 million was the budget. When the initial development of drawings and Willis Smith was brought onboard, the initial design development cost estimate was about 8.9 million. So we had to go back to the drawing board. So if you look at, in particular, one of the things that we changed is the roof line. It was originally intended to be an arched roof as part of this, just to means of being able to save some money associated with how things are built, we've kind of flattened out the roof, and we can do some cosmetic aspects associated with it to have it actually look like a curved roof from the end, if we do some parapet walls on the ends, there's a potential to do that. But effectively, it doesn't necessarily change the appearance of the building and all that much. But again, there had to be some value engineering done. So Willis Smith got to work, and what they did is they prepared 20 bid packages to send out to their subcontractors as a preliminary, to get some preliminary numbers. They got 40 bids back, which means they got multiple bids on different components of the project. On the low end, it ranged from about 8 million, on the high end to about 8.4. So so far, we've shaved somewhere around a half a million dollars off of the cost of this. Included in those bid numbers is a 3% construction contingency, not unheard of, also a 5% design contingency. The design contingency is basically included into the cost estimate to say, between the set of drawings that you prepared and gave us to get pricing on, if there are changes when they are finalized, we're allowing for some changes to occur. So hopefully, that number is something that we can utilize to save some additional money. Some additional savings, as part of those 8 million to 8.4 million, there was no allowance for direct owner purchase. Willis Smith has indicated that they average somewhere around 1.4% of the construction cost can be saved through direct owner purchase. In this case, that's probably somewhere in the $75,000 to $100,000 range.
That would be something like us purchasing generator, big switchgear, different types of things, where we could save basically the tax on it.
We're also doing some modifications to the gates and the fencing that is required. Originally, it was set up to have rolling gates on both ends of the project site with fencing all around. We're modifying that to provide for secure parking for the employees that utilize the facility to minimize how much that is. So the $138,000 that's in there, we might be able to cut that significantly in terms of the reductions in the gating and the fencing associated with it. And again, the design contingency that's included in the project, the $400,000, depending upon how we're going, there'd be a portion of that that we would hope to be able to save as well. From a structure, construction schedule standpoint, current, we've already given Folly Bryant approval to continue on with completion of the construction documents, to take it from the design development stage to the final construction documents. Those construction documents are due to us by January 26th, and then that would be approved by us as a final set, and then given to Willis Smith as well to start their formal bidding process, which is, again, will be a repeat of kind of what they've already done, but finalizing it. That's about a two-month process, so we would anticipate having a guaranteed, a draft guaranteed maximum price for the project by March 20th, which would give us the seven days required for us to get it on the council agenda for May, March 27th. And then essentially, the construction period for the project is set at about 14 months, which includes two months for demolition of the building that's out there and 12 months. And all of this is predicated with a presumed construction start date of July of 2024. So you'd be looking at completion sometime around the end of August of 2025. With that, I'd open it up for questions to just kind of let you know, we're not necessarily asking for any action at this point, we're just keeping you informed of where things are at, and make sure that we're all on the same page, so like, you're happy with the way we're having the building look in this presentation on the side.
So just, just a couple more items real quick that I don't think Jim hit on, and we specifically got with Willis Smith on, is that when they got their most recent pricing back, it was an average. Jim pointed that out. Okay, and that means an average of all the bids they received. So they didn't just go with the lowest bid like they could have, it was an average. So there's potential cost savings there as well. There's other items we're looking at, like Jim mentioned, the fencing, where we can value engineer and remove items that we just don't, we don't want or we don't need. Okay, so, you know, there's potential savings more there. One thing we weren't totally happy with when we heard the new timeline, you know, was like, why? Why is it, you know, stretched out an extra, an additional four months, you know, on top of the two we felt like we've lost? You know, we've had some interesting meetings, and a lot of this is not on anybody's hands here, you know, with the, with the architect or the contractor, has to do with swift mud, and on a lot of civil approvals that go along with the project, that those timeframes are just, it's out of our control. So, you know, and to keep everything on track, you know, like Jim said, this is an update for y'all, really to address any like concerns as far as like how the station looks. I mean, we're worried about that, as far as y'all are concerned, and then also making sure that when it is time for the GMP, that it comes back in a reasonable and meets the square footage cost that we're hoping for. So, you know, we've, we're still maintaining that, that push and that hope, so. But we're close enough now that with, it's going to be right up to that limit. I don't know how to get around that, you know, we've talked about it, and then, you know, we're hoping to maintain that line. But, you know, as Jim said, there's always contingencies in there that, you know, for the unexpected things, so.
Vice Mayor Coker?
Yeah, just two things. First off, when you talk about the value engineering and the fencing, I would just request that we not go to chain link. I mean, it, okay. I just want to make sure that that's kept aside. And then also, in looking at it, just because I heard so much, and I'm sure you're looking at it, but just making sure that the bay doors are wide enough, I guess that was an issue for.
We got that covered.
Okay, great.
It really wasn't an issue, it was just an optical illusion.
Okay, well, I just, I heard so much about it, I just felt like I had to.
But I look at something, it looks smaller than it is.
But along those lines, we have had specific meetings with Folly Bryant, where we've done a, call it a post-mortem on Fire Station Three, to say what went good, bad, and ugly, and let's not make sure that we don't repeat those, those things with Fire Station Two.
Awesome, that's all.
All right. All right, I just have, and I'm going to ask the question because I know it's going to be probably brought up later, is obviously, we know what Fire Station Two cost. There was never a cost estimate that Fire Station, or excuse me, Fire Station Three cost. We went through that process at the time it was. There was never saying that Fire Station Two would be the same cost as Fire Station Three. It was just a comparable point. But in today's market, and I would like to ask the contractor question to come up and, you know, say something.
Mayor, if I could just address that, we actually asked, I think it was Folly, to price out Station Three in today's dollars about a year ago, a year and a half ago, and we were advised that, I forget what the number was, Jim probably knows it.
So Fire Station Three came in at about 2.5 million.
Microphone, please.
Microphone, please.
Fire Station Three came in at a final cost of around $2.5 million. And when we asked for it to be priced out in comparison to current market value, I think it was in the range of about 4.5 million is where they estimated it to be. There are some differences associated with, between Fire Station Three and Fire Station Two. The design for Fire Station Two, because of the site and everything else associated with it, it's a two-story building versus a one-story for Fire Station Three. So some of those components have contributed. But also, Fire Station Two was bid kind of in the mid of COVID. We got a low price, sort of paid the price for it to be a low price. I don't think the contractor made any kind of money on that project.
And we've had to do stuff since.
We've had to do some stuff since to. We've had to do some stuff since to, to, to make some corrections. So realistically, it's not apples and apples.
And I believe the size of this project is significantly si, uh, larger than Three in as terms of square footage. I, I think it's about fifty percent bigger, actually. So if you build a two thousand square foot house and then compare it to the price of a three thousand square foot house years later, you have to take that into consideration.
Well, and we reduced Station Three down and we, we have no room for growth at this point, you know, so, you know, it's kind of, when we made that reduction, I won't say we shot ourselves in the foot, but I mean, when you're looking at storm needs and everything else like we're working at for Station Two, is that we don't have any extra room. And so, you know, we went with a minimum, you know, all the way down to somehow that even the kitchen cabinets got shaved, and we won't go into that. But, but you know, there were some things, a lot of cuts that were made, including the square footage. And as you pointed out, with the bay doors, all that was reduced down to where we have no room for air, you know, on, on things like that. And we're hoping to avoid that with this project, you know, and we know that with the fourteen thousand square foot, you know, facility like this is that, you know, we have that little bit of extra room and, you know, including, you know, some additional bunk rooms, things like that for staffing needs during, you know, emergencies and such, so.
Well, the benefit to Station Three is we have, going to have a P-SOC right next to it.
Right, and that, that, that just, you know, is an addition to, to meet those needs.
And, and our growth is out east.
Yes, sir.
So some of those factor in, but, but I do want to ask the, the contractors, obviously. If you were doing something the beginning of COVID or even just a little before, the pricing of something then compared to the pricing now, which is not your fault, it's not anybody's, it's the market and it's that, I mean, do you see anything where we've gone to, do you see anything pulling back over the next six months to a year that could help in some of even more numbers coming down?
Yeah, Brett Rameker with Willis Smith Construction and Robbie Gronback, our Director of Preconstruction with Willis Smith. I would say when we were working with another agency in Sarasota County, we did two very similar identical stations on two different sites. That would be Station Nine on B Ridge and Station Twenty-three in South BMO. Station Nine, if you look at just the sticks and bricks, so we're talking foundations all the way up through the roof, we're not talking about site, we're not talking about any of the other ancillary buildings concerned with that station. The price difference between Station Nine that was bid in two thousand and nineteen and Station Twenty-three that was bid in twenty twenty-two was over a forty percent cost increase, identical. Same subcontractors bidding it, that is directly related to what we saw in the market when we got into the COVID pandemic timing. So to speak, Mayor, on just a quick cost study, that is the premium we saw over just a two-year gap on identical buildings. And your other question, Mayor, was?
Well, you bring that up and, and again, if we're looking at it, and I'm not questioning, you know, I'm in very full support of getting this done, but you look at it, we were at two point five, now we're at eight. So even your scenario with that, this is even double, triple that, so. But, but again, size is different.
Mr. Perry had stated this size difference as well. You know, we are seeing more stability now in the market. Coming to find out, as I was sitting in here, I actually saw an email come across on reduction in steel, which is on another project and is very good to see, we're seeing reduction in some other materials as well. Our lead times are starting to increase. Our subcontractors are also becoming more hungry for work, more competitive in nature on pricing too. So to say that I think we've hit our high limit.
And then when we come back in a couple of months with the GMP, we'll knock on wood as Mr. McClellan just did, that we might even be able to tighten the belt a little bit and still have the same facility. And that would be, and again, I think, you know, I've said this a lot, and there was a great ambassador for our city with a lot of years of experience once said, we can act, we can't be full business-like, we can be, or full business, we can, but we can be business-like in government. So, um, you know, I think that's what we've done as a council and the administration has done. So it's just not, oh, well, it's the city or it's the government, let's do the eight point seven, they're not going to say nothing. And, you know, we want the accountability for that, but we also have to be respectful for that, you know, because like I said, this is a project that, that, you know, when I became mayor a few years ago, I made a phone call on a rainy day at eleven o'clock and the chief at that point and another person that's our chief now went for a ride because we'd been talking about it for five, six, seven years and we, we found the property, you know, and it wasn't the most ideal site. Location was probably the most ideal, but the size was a little question and the price was right, you know, so that, that was important. And here we are three years later, you know, again, timing, you know, you, you know it as a businessman, if somebody comes up to you and wants to build a building, you're going to start working it, they're going to build it. It's not going to be a government issue. And again, I'm not criticizing anybody. I'm just saying we need to keep that path because we're going to get those questions, you know, two point five, eight million, but it's not comparing apples and apples. But the propaganda out there is going to be the propaganda and we have to be able to at least answer it when we're in front of somebody.
I, I would also point out that another significant difference between Fire Station Three and Fire Station Two, with Fire Station Three, we tore down an existing building, built the new building in the same spot. Site work wise, it was very minimal. There was no stormwater pond associated with it. This project, where there's an existing building on the site, but it's small in comparison to what we're building, as well as the access roadways off of both Twenty-second and Twenty-third associated with the building add to the overall site work cost as well as the permitting in terms of SWIFT MUD and all of that that especially count.
Apples and oranges.
I'd also point out, I think the six hundred thousand dollars in required FDOT spec, uh, mast, traffic drill mast.
That we already had that at the other fire station, right, the light. All right, that, then again, like I said, I'm not criticizing, I'm just wanting to be able to explain.
Can I just ask a question about timing?
Too much to tear down the metal building.
Yeah, that, I mean, there's a couple of questions I have about it, which is, I'm, I'm somewhat disappointed in the A and E side of this because we had a lot of meetings canceled and we are where we are at now. And, and I'll reserve those comments any further, but are we going to, with supply chain issues and, and things of that nature, should we be looking at pre-purchasing some of these major components if it's switchgear or, or generators or things like that that are typically out? Because we got a gap where I'm looking at this of four months, basically, March till a proposed July start construction date. Four months is a long time for projects to sit, in my opinion, that's already been approved for GDP, construction drawings are done and the like. So I know we're dealing with SWIFT MUD and that's probably a worst-case scenario is what I'm told by the chief after talking with Brett and some of the folks from Willis Smith on the construction side. But, um, I, I'd like to see this thing, you know, some, some, some work being done out there prior to four months and maybe it's three, maybe it's two. We included in there the demolition of the existing structure. And so, once we get the, uh, the gross maximum pricing, the G, the GMP done, can't we just get a demo permit, start demoing that building out? Problems with that, Brett?
Mr. Perry, if I can clarify a few things, after our internal discussions, we have removed the demolition from our scope of work that was going to be done in-house by the city. Originally, we had fourteen months in our schedule, only one month was doing the demo and site prep. So I have revised our overall schedule down to thirteen months, knowing that the city would take care of that. Tear down that building is done in two weeks. Yes, that's all it is. And then to answer your other question, as far as when we present that GMP and it is approved by council, we immediately go out and start issuing our subcontracts to our subcontractors. We start going through the procurement process of getting the shop drawings in, having it reviewed, and then those materials finally released. There is no reason that we have to wait until construction starts, until contracts can be issued to our subs, material pricing locked in and, uh, material procured and brought to the site and stored.
Yep. So is there anything that we can do to make the schedule a little quicker?
Well, the critical path for us to get to GMP right now is as tight as it can be. As you saw in the schedule, we'll receive the contractual contract documents at the end of January. It takes us a minimum of two months. That's four weeks for our subcontractors to look at. It's four weeks for us to qualify everything. And then we're going to do, I think, March twentieth, a draft to the internal team and then present you all the GMP on March twenty-seventh. That is the fastest that process can happen.
That's from the point they get construction drawings, bid the work and, you know, get hard pricing for.
But we don't want anything to delay any of that.
No, I think that's pretty reasonable.
The main deliverable we need is to have the contract documents on January twenty-sixth. Any day that that's pushed, then, then they will get pushed.
And that would be a question for the people that's sitting behind you. They're from Folly Bryant, an architectural firm here in town that we use quite a bit. Would you like to opine on that and perhaps commit?
Hi, my name's John Ward with Folly Bryant. Yes, we, we are on track to meet that deadline of, of January twenty-sixth. Our construction team, uh, design team is progressing drawings and, um, we're committed to that date, so nothing's going to delay that. You know, we continue to have sidebar meetings and regular meetings with the team with, uh, Chief Gear and John Todi and Jim McClellan. So we're on, we're on track and we're ready to, you know, to, to get this thing moving. I think as far as the design goes, we're, our, our job is to try to make sure that we provide a really good design for this, uh, this fire station that's going to look good to the community, going up and down sixty-four. So done our due diligence and we're excited to just keep progressing through this and making sure we're hitting the deadlines that we've committed to.
Any other questions?
I got a quick question on that. At what stage of, of, uh, of DD or, or, or construction drawings do you at? Because January twenty-sixth is about three weeks after the holiday.
Yeah, we submitted, we submitted, you know, design development drawings back in October, so we're currently working on, uh, construction documents at this point.
And as a percentage approximately?
At this point today?
Yes, sir.
CDs, I'm, we're about probably fifty percent through our process because we're still coordinating with consultants. Architecturally speaking, our, most of our drawings are probably further along than fifty percent. We still need to have that coordination effort with MVP and structure.
And as it relates to any third party with DOT, SWIFT MUD, or, or any of these folks, are you having any hindrance on your construction drawings related to that? Site work, SIP?
Right, no, um, as far as the, the, like the mast arm you're referring to, that's, the civil engineer is handling that portion of it, which I believe is a separate contract, separate pricing effort. And as far as all the civil.
Through your contract though, right?
What's that? Yes, it's listed out in there, but it's a separate entity, not part of this.
Oh, I get that, yeah, yeah.
So, um, your, your second question is, as far as the civil work, there, I had a discussion with our civil contractor or subcontractor, they're progressing, they started right away. So their drawings will be ready at the same time as ours and they'll be ready to submit for the, the permitting portion of, of that as soon as possible. And I know that process takes months too, so I can't speak for that, you know, as far as how to speed up that process, kind of out of our hands.
Who is the civil on this?
VG, yeah, VGE, yeah.
And you've had conversations with them and they think that they can meet their deadlines?
Absolutely, yeah, they, they have responded that they will.
When am I going to see an SIP proposal?
SIP, what's a SIP?
Site Improvement Plan as Required or Approval by Our Engineering Department for Permitting. I'm sorry?
Yeah, GAY is working on, VGE is, is working on that. I will have to follow up with them to see exactly when they'll be presenting that.
I think we'd like to know the answer to that question because we have to do SIP review after that and work it through our process. And it might even have to go, just have to go through, um, Planning Commission? Okay. It goes right through you guys?
Correct. I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with them and then confirm with, get those dates over to, to Jim and.
Thank you.
All right. This again was just for discussion, no motion needed to move forward.
No, sir, appreciate you guys coming down.
All right, thank you, I appreciate you waiting through the meeting. All right, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any unfinished business on the agenda today.
Okay, so we'll go to council reports, we'll start in Ward One.
All right. Okay, uh, let's see, first off, I want to thank the Village Green Association. They met and invited me to come and it's, it's always nice and, and I hope everybody realizes it's nice to be able to sit down with them, hear, hear what, update them on what's going on with the city and also to discuss any concerns or questions that they might have. So I want to thank them for making themselves, uh, including me in it. And I would encourage any other associations that are meeting in, in Ward One to reach out to me. I'm always willing and, and actually happy to, to come to your meetings. In terms of the holiday season, right now, I know anybody that watches the news, there's so much divisiveness and, um, and just plain hate out there. And it's, I hope that we can set it aside during this thing, during this season. And I wanted to take an opportunity again to thank BPD for last night. It was just so wonderful to work with those kids and that's what the Christmas season's all about. And then also a shout out to thank the Shabbat of West Brayton. We had the opportunity to go with them the other night for the lighting of the menorah and, um, it, it was just, it, I appreciate having an opportunity to be able to celebrate the beginning of their holiday season, um, the Jewish, the Jewish people who are, who right now are suffering a lot. And so it was nice to have an opportunity to be able to support them. And also, um, attending Winter Wonderland the other night was wonderful, seeing the, the musicians, the, the young musicians that Del Couch brought for us and all the fun family activities. It was just nice being out on Old Main Street and seeing that Christmas spirit out there. And so I, um, just want to, um, wish everyone in, in our community, um, I hope that their season is, is, uh, filled with blessings for them and their families. And then one last thing, I got this great gift today that I just wanted to give a public thank you and make sure everybody got to see this nice T-shirt I got for Christmas.
It's just a first-place trophy for the losers.
They'll wear it to Miami.
So thank you, that's all I have.
We're two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time of year is, is a hard time of year for families that have lost someone they love, so I want to send my deepest sympathies and a, a lot of love and a great big hug to the families of Pat Wyndham. We owe the Wyndham family a lot in this community and he was a gentleman that, that was, you know, was not necessarily from here originally, but came here, had his family. And the fact that we still have the original First Baptist Church building in downtown is because of Pat's son, David, and his, his wife, Patsy, and his daughter and, and several other family members, because all of that stained glass that's in that building, it's the original glass. And when they started refurbishing the building, they didn't know how to do stained glass, but they took it upon themselves to learn and they repaired all of the stained glass and they didn't even break one piece of the original glass. So Pat Wyndham and his family have, have served this community in many different ways at different times and, and I wanted to send my sympathy to them and also to the Mackey family with the passing of, of Jack Mackey. Jack was involved at Manatee High School as a coach and an administrator for many, many years. Again, came here, raised his family, the family has gotten involved in the community and again, just, just a legacy. And we want to remember them at this very difficult time to have lost someone. So again, hugs and love out to the Mackey family. And then some good news, Tracy Vita, who'd been a dance instructor here in our community for forty-three years, is finally hanging up her tutu. And she's, has some of the staff that is there is going to take over the dance studio. But Ms. Tracy is known far and wide for her just outstanding recitals and love of children and, and has just done some fabulous things in this community. And one of the reasons that she's retiring is she has, has grandchildren and more grandchildren coming and I absolutely love her grandma name because it's Italian, but it works for a ballet. for a ballet dancer. Her grandma name is Tutu. So, to Tracy Tutu Vida, congratulations and enjoy your retirement. Would like to thank, uh, Realized Bradenton and Dell Couch with everything that they did to make, uh, Winter Wonderland happen, to all the city staff that has been involved, our public works people, our fire department, our police department. Again, it, it, we all have to work together to make it successful. So, I, I would like to thank everyone that, uh, came and worked, as well as all of the people that brought their families down and made some additional memories in our community, the friendly city, and to everyone, a happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, sir. Um, again, with, uh, this time of year and people passing, uh, sad for me to announce, uh, retired MSO Detective Sergeant John Kenny passed away, uh, last few days. Um, he was a longtime homicide investigator, worked well on the homicide task force with a lot of our detectives, uh, funny guy, really just always would make you laugh. Um, if, uh, for just a point of interest, that Dateline NBC that was done on the beach, um, that Sabine Muzy Bueller homicide, he was the one who was on that, and to see him up on TV talking about it was even crazier. Uh, so very sad to be missing him. Um, Winter Wonderland was fantastic, the, the Shabbat, um, West Bradenton, I was glad, Rabbi Zev, we were finally able to get everything taken care of with him. Uh, but to be at that, uh, Hanukkah celebration was very, very touching, especially this time of year, of this year specifically. Um, again, Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and Happy New Year to everybody. And also, uh, fifty-four years ago today, Jack Kramer, uh, married my mom, who became Karen Kramer, and, uh, in my grandparents' living room. And, uh, so, happy anniversary to them, to my dad in heaven, but my mom, when I told her I was going to get married to Maria, uh, why don't you have my dad's ring? So...
Nice.
Now you're crying. I'm crying, too.
I know, no, that didn't set me off to use her.
Uh, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Um, but, yes, I'm not going to cry. I'm going to hold it together.
Don't make us place bets on this, okay, after today's meeting.
Uh, um, that was going to be the tone of my, uh, word comments. Um, it's been a year, and it has been, um, it's been surprising in so many ways, but the primary one was that I didn't know when I first started the extent of relationship building and repair that was going to need to happen, and I just have a real heart full of gratitude for the staff and everyone's patience and kindness and inclusivity, and I'm just so happy that the council is, you know, I love telling people that we don't always agree on how to get there, but our vision is unified, and we're very functional and work well together, is my summation. Um, and, um, and I, I'm just thankful for that. So, I'm excited to move into year two and keep moving on with the momentum that we've gained. And I will just say one little holiday thing, and I want to make sure I'm saying the correct thing. Um, this Friday, December fifteen, Old Manatee is having a candlelit block party from five to nine, if anybody would like to check that out and get more into the holiday spirit than we already are, but, other than that, I just have a blessed New Year, everyone, and we're going to keep at it.
Thank you. Ms. Coachman?
It's good to be last for you. Uh, one thing I can say ditto to, a, a few things, um, I, I was going to bring up some things that, you know, some concerns I've been getting from the, the community, but I've spoken with most of the directors, and I'll be getting with them, um, to work on some things. It's just the usual, um, speeding through the neighborhoods, um, or, you know, somebody's selling things in the park, uh, things of that nature. Um, but there is something that, uh, I've been hearing a lot, and it's, uh, some of the apartment complexes in the area are really, um, putting their foot down or feet down in terms of not having illegal parking in their parking lots. So, as they start, uh, towing or, or moving people out of parking in their parking, com- complex parking, then they're parking along the streets, and these people are blocking driveways and so forth and so on. So I've been getting a lot of calls about that, but I have talked with, uh, the chief, and, um, I have, I, the, the respective directors I will be getting with them. Uh, I want to keep in the spirit of, uh, talking of the holidays, and there have been some events that have already happened, Winter Wonderland and Blues Fest, and, you know, the city can rock, it really can. Um, and, and there are going to be some future things coming up, too, and we'll just continue to rock into the season. Uh, I just want to say best wishes again to our retirees, and I am not going to cry. I'm not going to cry. Um, and I want to say happy birthday to my youngest son, Richard, he's going to kill me that I said this, but I'm going to just leave it at that. I'm actually in a meeting, and it's actually his birthday. Uh, so he'll turn a certain age, and I guess I won't say, but it's a milestone, uh, one of those young milestones that I remember. Uh, at eight oh eight, he will be of that age. Happy birthday, Richard. And for everyone else, happy holidays. There's so many different holidays and different ways we celebrate, uh, so I'll just say happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you, obviously, to all of our staff. Um, what we've gone through this year has been a lot of growing, a lot of stuff, has, has a lot of mornings I'll go into Mr. Perry's office and he says, "No more, please," you know, because we've got a lot of projects on the board, and it's not about, you know, the projects, there's a lot of things that, that, you know, I know a lot of the boots on the ground aren't here, but, you know, when, when I'm looking at something and, and trying to get something done or figure it out, it's more about the image of us, and it's all of us, because unfortunately, people do look at government, "Oh, it's just government, and they're not doing anything," or they're not trying. And, and the, the collaboration as well as just the cohesiveness of this council, along with all of our staff, is well seen now, and obviously, we saw that during the, uh, Halloween celebration when Planning Department won, but everybody won that day, because you saw that people are happy, you know, and, and, and when you're happy in your job, you want to be there and you want to do those things. And for a while, it wasn't like that here. And with this council and administrative staff going through it, we're at that point now. And, you know, there's going to be disagreements, there's going to be things that happen, and, but, you know, you can do it civilly and not disrespectfully and still figure things out in a good way. So that, that was important to me coming in a couple of years ago, and it's important to me today, and it'll be important to me tomorrow and the rest of my life. So, that's one of the things that, that I'm proud to say that, hey, we're working better for the citizens, we're making things happening, we have our biggest budget ever this year, and we still have lowered your military rate two times in a row. So, you know, and we're looking at now, talking about the fire station today, talking about things, and, you know, that's a good thing that we're doing for the city. And, and, you know, I have more meetings in my office in the last couple of weeks with citizens that want to hear the truth. They just want to hear what it is, not bu- my way or what we think, but not the propaganda that gets out there. You know, come in, and, and I know every one of yours phone are available to talk to people, because, again, we can disagree on a, a concept, but we don't disagree on how we can make it better for our city. And one of those things is, and this is where I would really like to thank the staff and people working through it, is, I came in many years ago and came in as mayor as saying, "I'm an events guy." So, we're having a lot more events with the support of all of us up here, and that does tend to stress some of the staff at different times, at the different levels. So, you know, again, it's also the image of the friendly city, and we see that when you walk down Main Street, when you walk down your street. And, you know, we want to be as inclusive as with everybody, but it is working. There was a cornhole tournament this weekend by DeSoto on Rossi Park. They were blown away by the turf that's there now. And, uh, Blues Fest, they were blown away by the turf, and they're like, "Wow," because it made a difference. Environmentally, it made a difference. It, it's, it's working in a lot of ways, and little things that we can do are important to that. And so, as we go forward, we're still going to have our moments where we just, "Ah, I want it this way, that way," or, you know, we're looking at different things, and it is important to keep going. So, and, and the reason I say a lot of that is, and, and even one of the things Ms. Barnaby had brought up about the Wyndham family and the legacy of what Pat has brought to the community with Davy doing what he has done, and even one of the things that Captain Lewis's house on Riverview Boulevard, you know-
Fogarty. I thought it was Fogarty.
Okay, Fogarty House, but, right, but, I, the, you know, all the people that live there with the, you know, over the years, that house could have been torn down and probably would have been cheaper to just do it, but Davy Wyndham Construction is the type of family that brings it back. It's not only about money, it's about bringing it back to the history of that community. Um, so, I was just going by Rodney, what Rodney Potter told me, who had lived there, Captain Lewis had lived there at one time, so, yeah, that's-
I had it listed, it's definitely a Fogarty house.
Yeah, Fogarty House, so Rodney told me, but we'll blame it on Rodney, but can't change it.
Well, I, the, the gentlemen that you were speaking before were not my contemporaries, so I can't-
But those things that, when you look at the history of what's the town and how it goes, um, and obviously, Coach Mackey was, I, I'm not sure if he was the first head coach at Southeast High School, but he was one of the head coaches there for years before he came over to Manatee and started a tradition of what Southeast has been over the years. So, you look at when we lose those patriarchs and people that have made what our community is, I think we're also working towards that and making some of the communities and, and working for it. So, um, all of the events, the Blues Fest, Winter Wonderland, and again, I'm going to thank the Barnaby family for the history of that, and how, you know, we work to make it where it's more, less work for the Barnabes, but more sustainable, and there was some things we learned this year that will be better for next year. So, some of those, every, every event you learn that's better. The Bradenton Alive is working up to be better, because those events will make some of our businesses downtown thrive, you know. You, you hear from some of the smaller businesses on Main Street, one event like that can pay their rent or mortgage for a month or two, where if you don't have it, then they're struggling a little more. So, some of the, you know, things that don't always go right in that, let's figure out how to fix them, let's not figure out how to stop them. And that's one thing we've done, and, and we've got a great staff as we go through it, you know, working to the positive. You know, it's not always just, "No, you can't do it," it's, "Well, we have rules, figure out how to abide within the rules and make it happen," and that's, that's very important to keep going. Um, again, our event last night shows you why we're here and what we do to help, you know, those families that need us the most, and, you know, we've got a lot of them, you know, that need us, and hopefully, you know, as we go through things and do things that might not always be popular at the moment, but then come out to be where we've changed that, so we have less of those families and give them the, the value. And that's one thing that, that I came out of the last few weeks of some of the meetings is, we've got to make people feel valued. And, you know, whether it's right now, I believe our city employees are, are going to that, and I don't know if that was the case-
Right.
-a year ago, and, at that point. So, we're going to keep fighting, we're going to keep working, fighting in positive ways, not fighting amongst each other, but, but to continue to help do the right things for the right reason, and you know my motto, especially when nobody's looking, and that's what we're doing. So, thank you. Any department heads want to follow that up?
[laughing]
Alright, let's go have a party with, with Jeannie and Jim, we're adjourned.